They're back there.
We'd like to welcome everyone out to the Highland City Council meeting on August 16th, 2022. It is 7:04 PM. We'd like to start our meeting with an invocation by Councilmember Kim Rodella with our pledge allegiance by Councilmember Tim Ball.
Our dear Congress, as heavenly Father, we're so very grateful to be able to gather here tonight and to be able to go over certain discussion items with our city. Please be with us as we make the decisions that need to be best for all the residents in our city. And we're extremely grateful to be blessed to live in Highland. We say so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Just then, join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll start with item number one, which is time for unscheduled public appearances. If there anyone would like to come up and address the city council, if you'll keep your comments brief into three minutes, please. Is there anyone who'd like to come up and address the council on any issue? Seeing none, we'll now close public appearances and we'll move on to item number two, presentations. We have a presentation from our youth council.
Hi, I'm Sophia Thompson, the government chair for youth council. This past month, we've been prepping for the fling, which was like a week and a half ago. And so for fling week, we all were in the parade and we helped with the kids' night on Friday night. And then just throughout the weekend on Saturday, we signed up for shifts and like just volunteered at the different activities. And then June and July, we just spent prepping. So yeah, we're excited for this school year. Thank you.
So you're excited for this school. Can I ask a question? So out of all the different activities, what do you feel like the youth council enjoyed the most? You had your movie night on Friday night, which I wanted to tell you thank you for, you had a good turnout from the youth council. But out of all the ones going on during the week, was the one that stood out in your mind?
Probably the parade. I think everyone loves the parade. And then I think just like helping with the like actual thing stuff on Saturday was a lot of fun for everyone.
Well, you tell them thank you. I noticed the youth council was very supportive during the fling week, so tell them thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll now move on to item number three, which is our consent items. Is there, if it's okay, I'd like to pull item number B. Is there any other items?
I wanted to pull B too.
Okay. So do we have a motion on three A and C?
I'll make a motion that we approve consent items three A, approval meeting minutes, and three C, action. Are we going to go over the?
If you'd like, do you want to pull those to go through the library board appointments?
It's Wes. Library board appointments.
So you're not pulling it. That's a motion.
That's a motion.
So we have a motion on three A and three C. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Kim, second by Scott. Are we ready to vote on three A and three B?
Three, three C.
Oh, three C, I'm sorry. Three A and three C. At this time, we also like to excuse Councilmember Sarah Peterson. She is traveling tonight, so will not be with us. I think we have our votes in.
I just want to say I'm really excited for Wes to be on the library board with us. It's a party.
Okay. Are we ready to reveal the results?
The anticipation. Oh, my goodness.
That passes four to zero. We, Scott and myself, wanted to pull item number three B. It's the final plot of Dorado, which is over in the Ridgeview subdivision. It's a road. Scott, I'll let you go ahead and go first.
Well, I just wanted to learn more about it. There's two or three things. I drove up on Featherstone, which is parallel to Dorado, and it looks like it's basically complete. So this is actually a question for Andy. At what point will they connect Featherstone into the road south of the high school, which is what, 10,100 or something?
Yeah, so they've got a, if you will, a separate road plan for the additions to 10-100. And what we've talked about is that they've got to do it in no, the maximum they can divide it up into is two phases. And so the first phase would be the construction from the light over to Dorado. And then the second phase would be kind of from Dorado over to the intersection slash roundabout area. And so that's all coming as part of the current plats, you know, that are happening with, you've got the David Weekley plat, the, help me, I just went blank on the developer in the middle plat.
Lenar or something?
Lenar, sorry, the Lenar. I could not come up with Lenar's name there for one second. And then, you know, Ivory's doing the far western area. And so we anticipate that as part of this construction effort, which is building Dorado and the Lenar phase and the David Weekley phase, that the 10-100 improvements will be completed. But they're going to do that as one construction effort, if you will.
So are you saying Featherstone won't be connected either until that time?
Right.
Because I mean Featherstone's kind of almost up to the end.
Right, right. It's kind of like right to the edge. And then they're waiting to do the connection until they actually build the widening on 10-100.
So on Dorado and Featherstone, are there going to be any traffic slowing things put in there? Because it looks to me like, and we want to improve the traffic around the high school, of course, but it looks to me like you're going to have a high density development there. And yet, at least after school, you may be channeling a lot of school traffic on those two roads to get down to the east-west corridor. So I'm just wondering, are we doing anything to kind of help regulate the traffic through there?
Right now, there's no traffic calming specific measures on there. Like if you're thinking of, you know, bowl bouts or something of that nature. There is a four-way stop that's going to be installed where the, and I can't remember the name of it, but it's the road that goes on the north side of the park that then goes out to North County Boulevard. You know, that where that intersection is with Featherstone, there's a four-way stop. But there's not, in any of the designs right now, there's not specific, you know, bowl bouts or other, you know, traffic calming measures like that. You know, perhaps one of the best things that will help the high school traffic in this area is, and I know this has been shared with the council in various minutes, but, or weekly communications, but UDOT has decided that they are going to signalize Knight Boulevard, where Knight Boulevard intersects with North County Boulevard, up there by the soccer fields on the north end. And so that will give the students heading north another avenue. And that should free up some capacity at 10-100. But obviously, the students are going to take quote-unquote "the path of least resistance," if you will. And so hopefully, by making that northern end function a little better, it'll attract a few more of the northbound trips. And then it'll be more attractive for the students to go out on the North County Boulevard because of the stop sign, because they have to stop mid-block, et cetera. But that's what's laid out right now. And I believe that, well, I know that Featherstone has a little bit of extra width to try and accommodate some of those pass-through travel. I wasn't here, obviously, when that was all agreed upon, but my understanding was always that, you know, Featherstone, you know, it had been acknowledged, I guess, in the design that there was going to be a certain amount of high school cut through on it, so to speak.
Yeah, I just think we need to look at it pretty carefully because there are also, on Featherstone, halfway through on the south part is their park. And it just seems like, you know, and the people, many of the families that are moving into the development already, I mean, we were always kind of, there was always discussion about this would be a senior living area to a degree. But there are young families that are moving in. And it's like an economic thing. And I think we're going to talk more about that later in the agenda. But so there's going to be a lot of little kids running through there. I'm just a little concerned that, you know, we're kind of thinking things through. Because yes, we want to improve the traffic around the high school. Yes, we want this development successful. But this is a high-density development with going to be lots of kids. I just worried already about, you know, the high school kids racing through. And we don't have enough police officers that would patrol that area. But I'm just, you know, and Dorado basically ends, doesn't directly connect to the east-west corridor. Is that correct?
Right. And at the bottom of Dorado, or the south end of Dorado, you have to take another
Turn.
Band each way. So Dorado, while it will connect to 10-100, is going to be less attractive for the cut through. The one that's going to be attractive for the cut through to the kids.
It's Featherstone.
Featherstone. You know, and that's the one that'll have the four-way stop. But at this point, that's all we've done there. Certainly, it would be, I mean, the council's purview if you wanted to require some additional traffic calming measures on Dorado. But my hunch is, you know, that because at the bottom of Dorado, you've got to make a turn and then a turn to get to the east-west corridor, you know, that it's not going to be as attractive. I'm not going to go so far as to say that none of the kids are going to take it. But, you know, Featherstone's going to be the one that's going to be more attractive to them.
All right. Now, and you mentioned Featherstone is going to have a four-way stop on it?
Yeah.
Is that on Emerald Way?
And I was looking so that I could quote the road name as well. But if you're looking on your attachment three, I think attachment three is the easiest one to see it. So, and I don't know if we have any of these in the minutes or not, but to show attachment three, if we have anything on the, in the minutes.
The road that it comes down to and to is that?
It's the road that goes on the north end of the park there and
And that's Emerald Way?
Is that Emerald Way? No, it's Gallatin, Gallatin Way, at least on attachment three.
Okay, you got Gallatin Way that's on the north side of the park.
North side of the park.
On the south side of the park is Emerald Way.
Yeah, so it's the, it's Gallatin Way.
Elmfield? I guess it's Elmfield. I gotta look at that.
Elmfield, yeah. And I apologize. There's a lot of road names to remember there. I just know the configuration. But where Gallatin Way intersects with Featherstone, that'll be a four-way stop.
Okay.
And so that's probably the, you know, the number one deterrent that's in place right now on Featherstone, is just the fact that the kids will have to stop. So my thinking is that if we get the signal light in on the north end of the high school, there'll be a certain amount of trips that free up that way. And then if the light's a little more free-flowing, it might be more attractive for the kids to, you know, to go out on North County Boulevard and not have to deal with the stop sign.
Would you mind putting that, do you have a drawing of Canal Boulevard and how it connects to Featherstone and how that, even if it's a Google Earth situation? One of the concerns, we've had a couple of residents reach out about Canal Boulevard. It appears that we don't have a center median there connecting with Featherstone. But it's, and I was just wondering what, if the council would give any input. Do we want to have
A turn lane?
Like a turn, turn, or do we want not to have that?
Well, it's wide enough for a turn lane, I would think.
Yeah, I can at least chip in from the engineering side what I thought was. And it doesn't have a turn lane in the Boyer area because it was missed during the coordination between the Boyer scope and the road scope. And so the road got painted per the original plan. That was before Boyer added the shoulders, if you will. But our thought is that, you know, next year, next, I mean fiscal year 24, once, you know, things are really starting to get built out here, that we'll come into a silcoat and then repaint the, from, you know, where the, where you lose the third lane just going, you know, west, just past the intersection to where it narrows at the river. Because it's intended to have three lanes all the way to where it narrows at the river. And then where it narrows at the river, it'll always just have two lanes there. Because the road kind of physically narrows right there. But our thought was, in summer of '23, fiscal year '24, road projects, come and silcoat it and repaint it with the three lanes.
I mean, that was just, to me, it's a safety concern. There's going to be people, when we talk about Featherstone becoming a little busier, there's going to be several that will become in that turn lane. And that's where you can get rid of it because you don't have a way to kind of get into that center turn lane or have a turn lane at all. You're in the lane. And I understand people can go out around them on the ride, but I'm not sure that's the safest aspect.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. I think it needs to have the third lane all the way through the Ridgeview project.
I want to have our police or fire chief kind of chime in. I've noticed you guys have started having several calls on Canal Boulevard. And I don't know, is it up there in the Ridgeview area where you've had a couple of emergency calls on it? Or is it throughout the whole canal? Are we having any traffic issues or safety issues that you're aware of in that area?
I saw the police pick someone up the other day. I was kind of happy.
You're just happy it wasn't you, Scott.
I'm glad it wasn't me. I'm glad it wasn't the mayor.
I'm just kidding. We have not, obviously, we've had some traffic issues there. I'm not aware of anything that's related as far as accidents are concerned that would involve police. I can't speak to emergency medical services. If they've been called over there for any number of reasons, but it's just when you bring people in, you have public safety needs and services that need to be provided. So I think that's just a part of doing business. Nothing would be out of the ordinary.
And we've got to get prepared. We're going to have Costa Vida and Arby's open up there. We don't have, if you want to say, coming, going westbound, they don't have a turn in. And so they're going to have to hit and hit that roundabout. So it'll be a learning traffic movement.
Yeah, you're right. And as school is starting, just as school is starting and as the kids start using those roads and they start opening up, it's going to, there'll be an educational process that will have to be worked through there with the community public.
Is there any other discussion items we need on item number three B? If there isn't any, we can have a motion.
I'll make that motion. I move that we approve, as the Highland City Council, the final plat for the Dorado Road, which includes approval for 1.81 acres for the purpose of building Dorado Way located west of the Featherstone Drive, connecting 10-100 north to Elmfield Way.
I'll second.
I'm motioned by Scott, second by Kim. We're ready to vote. This vote here is not the vote, correct?
Why don't you guys go ahead and just voice vote this one?
Okay, we'll start on this side with Tim.
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Okay, that passes four to zero. Before we move on to another item, by popular demand, we've had requests to have Wes come up and share a little bit about himself. That's going to be serving on the library board. So we'd like to invite Wes to come up and just share a little bit about himself, the excitement to serve on the library board. And I want you to do it in a Scottish accent. He just got back from Scotland, so.
Took a while to get used to English again. What do you want to know? I mean, I graduated with the degree in English. And I originally wanted to be an English teacher. And then I met my wife. And she said, oh, I don't know if I can marry an English teacher's salary. So we'll find something else for you to do. And I have been looking to kind of scratch that itch ever since, I guess. But I love libraries. When I lived in Sugar House, we lived next to the, oh, man, what was the name? It was this old, old library that was kind of small, but not really deceivingly large. But it was on like, I want to say like 13th East, right off of 21st South. Anyway, no, I almost remembered it. But it's just the most quaint little old library. And my wife and I, back when we were kidless, would spend so much time there, just kind of losing ourselves and reading and then finding each other again. And she had like her bridals taken in that library when, you know, we got engaged. And so we did actual date nights in libraries. But it was, when we moved to Highland, it was so fun to have a little community library. It was, it felt like it was everyone's and also just mine and just yours. And it was, it was always, you know, taking my kids to little activities there and going on walks and hitting up the splash pack. And it felt like I was living in Fields, like I'm living in Stars Hollow, Gilmore Girls reference. Anyone?
I got it.
But I don't know, I'm really excited to be involved. It'd be cool to pull back the curtain and see what goes on and hopefully help out, make a difference.
Thank you for stepping up and serving there.
Yeah.
As well as you've helped with the Parks Committee. So we appreciate your service.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item number four, which is an agreement for a park impact fee analysis. Addendum? Amendment?
Fiscal.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Trying to get the PowerPoint here. And can you see the title slide there on your monitor as well? Great. Great to be with you. I appreciate the opportunity to chat with you this evening. This item comes as a result of your direction in a number of meetings. And specifically on June 6th, council asked staff to assess the park impact fee, revenue sufficiency, particularly relating to the remaining balance of the park bond, and determine to what extent impact fees should reimburse the general fund and other sources of park development that have occurred in the past. And so by way of background, Louis Young Robertson in Burningham, Frank Fipot's firm, reviewed our impact fees, a number of them back in 2020. Some others have been updated since. But particularly with this review in 2020, they looked at the park impact fee, which was increased. You may recall that impact fees consider a couple of components. One, what are the existing facilities in the city? And if there is capacity for those facilities to absorb the demand that the new development will replace, then it's called what? It's called buy-in, that those new developments pay into for the right, basically, to use those facilities. There's also a component that considers if there is increased demand, that will require additional construction, which is very common with sewer systems and PI and culinary. So it's really a combination, or could be a combination, those two components, impact fees, being buy-in and new demand. So the park impact fee, as I mentioned, in 2020, and it went into effect in 2021, was increased to $5,854 for every single-family resident. And that was dedicated exclusively to buy-in. So the determination was made through the ad assessment that the facilities that were existing and in process would be sufficient. So those facilities have been funded over the years by the park bond. We'll share some more information on where that we stand with that right now. The general fund and impact fees, a few other sources out there, but those are the main ones. So as I mentioned, the park bond, we are here about five years out from paying off this bond entirely. And this is the payment schedule. You'll see each year, there is a larger payment principal and interest that occurs in September, then another interest payment six months later. The total of these payments is $3,586,306, you see on that screen. Now, we've done some sharpening of pencils and looked very carefully at the Parks Capital Fund. And based on where our revenue and expenses that are budgeted for fiscal year '22, where we estimate that that'll end up being closed out at, that fund we estimate will be roughly $5.6 million. So roughly 3.6, 3.5 for bond payments, if the council wanted to hold that aside. And then there's remaining amount that at the current time, the intention is for that to go towards Mountain Ridge Park. So the purpose of the proposed analysis, one is to validate the impact fee, particularly given the amount of recent development since the review was completed back in 2020. And then a particular focus to repayment of the park bond. Once that's done, how much impact fee revenue can go towards the other sources, basically the basis for the buy-in and reimbursing the city and the general fund and other areas for investments that, in park infrastructure. So the cost of the analysis is estimated at $3,500. And have motions both for approval and denial prepared. Happy to take any questions you may have.
So let me just understand. I thought with, maybe I didn't understand the one slide with the figures on when the park bond would be paid off. But I thought with the increased billing permits, that we had an acceleration of the impact fees that were coming in, that we could maybe pay this bond off even sooner.
That's
Is that what you said? Did I not listen to that?
That is, that is correct. So this schedule is what was
Originally approved.
Required payments, yes. But there, if the council chose, the early repayment is possible. And you see in the March amounts, those are interest amounts, that you can see some savings that would be realized.
So you would save interest if we accelerated? And if the bond was paid off, then the impact fees could go towards other parks? Is that what you're telling us? Any improvements in the other parks?
And that's the purpose of this assessment, to determine just how much of those impact fees. State regulates impact fees very carefully. It has to be justified by what is the amount or the proportion of existing development, really these existing parks that new development should pay for. And then what do we have to invest for new infrastructure? You can't make any money on it beyond that. So that's really the focus as we discussed with council and mayor and understood your desire to potentially accelerate the payment on the bond and then make sure that we were very accurate in what the impact fee revenue could go towards. At what point do we have to then say, all right, maybe the impact fee can come down? Or that the analysis would determine that?
So the analysis will tell us, because to me, I mean, we're trying to build Mountain Ridge Park and finding the funds to do that. That's going to be built over a couple-year period. But other parks, like Island Glen Park and Beacon Hill Park that we've never finished, and all these other parks need some major improvements. And we've got playground equipment all over that's expiring. So the analysis will tell us how much the impact fees can go to that.
Yes.
But is your fear that once we get the bonds paid off, then we have to decrease the impact fee?
At some point, that will occur. But there is clearly, in the analysis Louis Young Robertson in Burningham have conducted, there is an element of buy-in. So there's a recognition that the general fund primarily and other sources have contributed to the existing infrastructure, and therefore there is an opportunity for reimbursement. So determining exactly that reimbursement amount.
What they're trying to do, from what I understand, Scott, is they're going to go look and say, how much does the general fund augment into the park bond payments? And they're going to look and say, hey, this probably should be coming back to the general fund. So if this money starts coming to the park, what was the general fund still owed back? Is that correct, Tyler?
That's correct.
And Tyler, you made a comment. So let's assume we paid the bond off. I thought that we had what we call the yield maintenance loan, that we don't get to save the interest. Because I thought this is a bond that you're kind of locked into for a certain period of time. Because those bondholders, they have a coupon clipper, and so they're anticipating the interest. If we pay it off, do we save the interest? Or do we, my understanding is that there's a penalty to pay it off. I mean, early, you've still got to pay all the interest on the same. You don't, you don't get away from the interest, I thought.
I'll go back and verify. I believe that there are some early termination opportunities. opportunities. Um, the, the city has the park bond. Um, we also have the uh, building bond. The, the PI portion was paid off last fiscal year. Um, but we'll, I'll check on that to confirm.
So at this time, and we'll be going through this as we look at, as we're looking at Mountain Ridge, but right now in our park capital funds, you're showing we have 5.6 million left in bond payments. We have about five, 3.6, so about 2 million. Now that 2 million, when we go through, you'll see where that money actually got put in through selling a spring creek. We had it where we were some Patterson, we sold some property, where Patterson purchased it and then we'll also have some, uh, property sell to Lehigh down the Dry Creek Lake. And that's where we got that extra 2 million. So it wasn't necessarily from the park impact, it was from some sale of property.
And in terms of early payoff, like the mayor said, we'll talk about this more later, but another consideration, um, council should keep in mind is while, you know, maybe we choose to pay 3.6 now and pay off the park bond, or maybe you use some of that money now for Mountain Ridge, knowing that you're going to collect more impact fees that can go towards future bond payments.
Okay. Is there any other questions? One question I have, Tyler, here we're going to an outside source. Is there, is there, is this a study that, why could staff not do it versus why do we have to go outside?
So the original study, um, even prior to 2020, the, the 2020 was a review of, of what had been conducted previously by Science Bank. Um, so uh, there's a considerable amount of analysis, um, that'll take place there to revise that. Um, and, and ultimately is a, a function of capacity, um, for the level of, of analysis and time that we take to do that.
I mean, uh, you know, Councilwoman Riddell reached out and says, hold it, this is $200 an hour. You know, when you're saying it's 17 and a half hours, should we say there's a stash line going, well, the cost is at $200 an hour. So.
That's great. You understand that?
Any questions on this? Is there a recommendation from the council what to do moving forward? Would they like to go forth with the study? What would you like to do?
So let me just ask a question, just kind of, um, piggybacking on what you just brought out. Do you think the study will be of enough value to us that we'll save that $3,500?
Easily.
Easily?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll make a motion. I move that City Council approve the proposal for a park impact fee analysis amendment for $3,500.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, second by Brittany. We're ready for vote. I'm sorry. Okay. You ready? We go. That passes four to zero. We're now on to item number five. It's an action item, a purchase contract for a skid steer. Andy?
Okay, Mayor and Council, um, this is uh, just a follow-up to our budget efforts. Uh, this year the council included a, uh, purchase of a skid steer for the cemetery in the budget. Um, you'll recall part of the purpose, the purpose for which we're buying this skid steer is to try and limit some of our damage in the wet seasons of the year. Um, so in some areas, we've had to access it with the backhoe and uh, for some of the infant burials and then some of the, sometimes when it's just too slick and we can't get the trucks there. And the backhoes make a lot bigger ruts than the trucks. And so what we're doing is we're buying, we're buying the skid steer because you'll see it has tracks there. And the tracks spread the load of the weight a little more evenly across the grass. And so they don't tend to do as much damage in the wet. Uh, and so bring this to you is just the next step of that budget process to then put in the order. I will note that uh, uh, thanks to our hefty inflation rate right now, when we started the budget process, the quote that we got was for around 77,000. So that's what we put in the budget. We got the quote to bring it to you and we're at 84 plus change. I can't remember the exact amount. Apologize. I was trying to have that up, but uh, um, and so uh, what we're proposing is that we just do a mid-year budget adjustment out of the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund. That would be, you know, that uh, $8,000 less that would come back to the general fund essentially uh, this year. Um, but I don't know what choice we have because uh, seems to be how it goes each time. We, you ask uh, for, for a price to, to make the order a couple of days later and, and we're up, you know, another jump in the amount. So.
So let me ask you, there's, we, is this based off of the state contract? We're buying nothing?
It's based on state contract.
We're buying this off the state contract?
State contract price, yeah. But it's just their state contract price went up. Uh, so, um, other than that, happy to answer any questions as to the need or what it is. Uh, but we do have the suggested motions to approve or to not, or to deny for you in the, in the PowerPoint.
So I have one question. And this is for Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Bills. She wants to know if we purchase this, if she can drive it.
Oh, she can drive this one. She can come down and we will let you drive. I don't know about the fire truck, but you can drive this one.
Is that fair enough? I knew you'd ask that.
I'm kind of holding to it, but yeah.
Absolutely. Come on down. Hey, we've got a great pile of asphalt tailings that we can put you to work on moving.
Are you certain you don't need like a license, a certain specialty license to drive that? Because I feel like maybe she should do that first.
There's no license on here. There's no license.
We'll put her through the training course, the Public Works Training Course and uh, and
Then we can race, Kim. You can run. I'll drive it.
No way. Challenge accepted.
And I'm in favor of this. I remember talking about it during the budget season and I think it's important to um, respect our cemetery.
So do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move that City Council approve the purchase of a skid steer for $84,865. Direct staff to include this $7,856 budget over to the mid-year budget adjustments and authorize the interim city administrator to sign the necessary purchase documents.
Second?
I have a motion by Brittany, second by Cameron. Ready for vote? That, that passes four to zero. On the item number six, which is a resolution and an agreement, is an inter-local agreement with Utah County regarding election ballot drop boxes. And we have Stephanie Cottle, who's our city recorder, doing the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. It's fun to be in front of you tonight. I don't get to do this very often. So, um, we, we have received prior council direction on this item. On, um, June, on May 26th, I sent you an email in regards to the camera, which, um, we were requesting to be reinstalled, which is all part of this inter-local agreement. I'll explain in just a few minutes. But this, um, camera was installed. That email explained a little bit about the specifications of the camera and what it was meant to do and why we were installing that. Am I not going the right way?
There it goes.
There we go. Let's see. Okay. So kind of a background with this inter-local agreement. HB 313 passed during this last legislative session, which required each municipality to have a ballot box as well as 24-hour camera surveillance. So on June 20, on June 2nd, 2022, we installed our camera and that was, that was able to meet the requirements for the primary election. Um, the inter-local agreement that is, that is before you for your approval tonight is, um, inter-local agreement through Utah County and it kind of, just kind of lays out the responsibilities of the city and the county in regards to the ballot drop box as well as the camera. And a part of the, an inter-local agreement also includes a reimbursement agreement for the camera. The county is going to reimburse us the cost of the camera alone on this. Just to kind of give a brief overview of what's in the inter-local agreement, the city responsibilities, we permanently secure the ballot drop box, which means we anchor it down in cement. And the location has been approved by both the city and the county. Uh, we access ballots only with authorization and when we do access ballots, there has to be two people, which is safe for those ballots. We provide a 24-hour video surveillance with this new camera and we will post a sign indicating that the ballot box is under surveillance for 24 hours a day. The county is going to provide, um, surveillance, we can, we will provide the county with surveillance recordings at their request. Uh, the county's responsibilities, they will purchase and maintain the ballot drop, drop box, including cleaning and inspecting. And I have seen them out there cleaning the ballot drop box before, uh, elections, which is kind of fun. Um, they will also provide access to the city when we require that for any official business that we would have with that ballot drop box. Uh, this county also provides the city with a surveillance, surveillance camera. And for us, that means they will be reimbursing Highland City for $2,413.36, which is the cost of our camera. They will also provide the city with a sign that we can place on the ballot drop box that says it's under 24-hour surveillance. So with that, I have a motion to approve and also a motion to deny. And I will take any questions that you might have.
Stephanie, I, so the county's requiring this and I understand that. I, I find it just a little odd that they'll purchase the camera, do everything, but they won't install it and pay for the installation. Do they have an explanation for that?
You know, I actually asked them about that because I would, would have preferred for them to pay for the entire installation. Um, but they said that they were only allowed to, to do the camera itself. So they didn't give me any, any explanation as to why they wouldn't cover the cost of the installation to. I assume they only were given just a budget for that.
How often do you think you have to replace that camera?
Well, we, we do have a five-year license for it, so it's under warranty for five years. I'm hoping it will last even longer than that. But it is a five-year license for it.
Are these the same kind of cameras that you currently have?
That, well, they are the same cameras that are actually on trial at Highland Glen. And then we also have one here in the city hall that we're trying out as well. So we've purchased this one, but the other, the other ones are on trial.
Because isn't the, the one, then it's similar to the one where you captured Cat Gate 2022? And it was really hard to see anything.
So this is the same camera that's, it's located on the library entrance over here? So that's where.
She's talking about the, when we had cats dropped off and wasn't that our old camera system?
That was the old one.
That we were looking on?
That was the old cameras. These cameras
Yeah, because it was hard to see anything.
These cameras are much clearer. And oddly enough, on the next item, we're going to talk about the same cameras.
Okay.
They are a lot, a lot clearer than the old one.
These cameras are, this camera's really nice. You can see all the way out into, you can see the utility drop box, the USPS box, the library drop box, as well as the ballot box. They're, they're very clear.
So the five-year camera license, that's not the debt, that's not the recording process? That's just the warranty. Should we bought an extra five-year warranty on this, correct?
Correct. That is my understanding of the
Can I clarify in that? I apologize. I just, because we're going to talk about the cameras. So they make you buy the five-year license fee for it and that's their fee for giving you the service and their fee for kind of, uh, hosting the data, you know, because they save 120 days worth of data on there. And so, um, that, that's their shortest duration that they let you buy as part of their purchase, purchase options. You can do the five or the 10. Uh, and then, uh, you know, the one thing I did want to clarify also is they, while they make you buy the five-year license fee, um, they, uh, there is a 10-year warranty on the camera.
So is this camera already installed?
It is. It was installed on June 2nd.
That's what I understood. So why are we approving this now?
We're approving the ILA, the inter-local agreement with Utah County.
It's the resolution. We've already approved to be able to buy it. Now we're approving a resolution, correct?
Correct. There's a resolution and the, the inter-local agreement.
Inter-local agreement.
Right. For the, for the maintenance of the ballot drop box and the camera itself. So.
Per the state code, it had to be up in time for election, which wasn't, the primary was in June, the camera.
So Andy just said that with this agreement, we get 120 days of it. Who pays for the rest of the days?
Well, they, they, they store 120 days of the video for you on the cloud.
Well, that's what they store on the cloud.
On day 121, you lost the first day's, uh, video, if that makes sense. So.
Right. So there's 120 days that are stored on, on this, on this camera. So we could go back 120 days if we needed to see footage that far back.
Okay, I understand better. I'm sorry. I'm not a tech guy, so.
I've had to learn a lot myself. Andy, had a questions on this agreement or the camera?
So this does cover the library drop box also?
Does, yes.
I'll take note of that. Okay. I'd like to make a motion. I move that the City Council approve the resolution to enter into an inter-local agreement with Utah County regarding election ballot drop boxes.
Motion by Kim, second by Tim. Ready for vote?
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. That is four to zero. Okay, we move on to item number seven, which is an action item, purchase of security cameras for city hall and splash pad.
So I apologize to keep chipping in on the previous item. I just happened to have to learn more about these cameras for this item. Uh, and so I had a few things to add, I guess, if you will. But as, as part of, uh, the trial that we've been doing for, um, the counter, because the first trial camera that, of this, this variety, the Verkata cameras that we put in was to, uh, to get some coverage at the cash counter where, where people's payments are taken. And then we also, uh, as Stephanie referenced, did the trials down in Highland Glen. So as part of that effort, uh, it was identified that a number of the cameras around the city hall and splash pad complex either don't work or as, uh, Councilwoman Bills had noted are, um, when it comes to identifying the actual, uh, person are very difficult to use. Um, so our cameras currently don't work other than the trial camera we have going right now, uh, uh, at the cash counter. Um, our cameras do work in some of the lobby areas, but they're a little bit difficult um, to see. And then they do not work, uh, out at the splash pad. Um, and so, uh, sorry, I was trying to get to, just the, okay. So, um, as we've talked about some of the vandalism and other things that has happened at the splash pad and other areas of the city, the council has expressed at least interest in getting updated cameras and, and, and security options. Um, and so we met with the, the representatives of Verkata and Cash Valley Electric, who is their installer, and, uh, looked at the complex and, and initially, you know, they gave us a quote for many more cameras because obviously they want to sell as many cameras as they can. Um, but we kind of pared it down to, uh, the minimum that you see on your screen there, um, which is, uh, what we, what this item would do is it would place two cameras at the cash counter area, one from each direction. So you get the, the coverage there. It would place a camera just outside the, to get this main lobby area here, uh, just outside the windows there that we're looking at now. It would place a camera out in the entry alcove on the exterior, and then it would place a camera over on the library hall so that you would get the comings and goings in the library hall. The library does have an existing camera system that they're working, oh, I lost Donna, but, uh, that they're, they're working to, to get functioning or make sure it's functioning. Um, I know that she was having some problems last week with it because I talked to her about it, but they believe that it, it can be working. They just needed some login information. And then it would place three cameras around, uh, the splash pad area. Um, and with the three cameras, we think we can get most of the coverage there. Um, this is an option that, uh, while it has been discussed, was not included in the budget. And so, um, while we do have some funds set aside for the care of these facilities, we typically use them uh, each year or the greatest part of them to care for the buildings. And so, um, if we did want to go forward with these cameras, it would ultimately represent a budget adjustment. Uh, you know, we'd see how the year went, but if, if this year goes like most years, we're going to use all the money that we have allocated to just maintain the facilities or the most, the greatest part of it. So, um, the expense is just over $25,000 to install these cameras. And that does, uh, get us the five-year license fee on each one. And then, uh, we would anticipate that at the end of the five years, we'd, you know, have to pay the license fee again for another five years. Um, but they are a much better quality camera. And, uh, the good thing about them is, uh, at least for the ones on the outside, um, they can take the heat, they can take the elements, et cetera. Um, uh, and, uh, so it's an item that we bring to the council for consideration. It's certainly a good idea to upgrade a good idea to upgrade, um, in, in talking with the city staff. The city treasurer feels, um, strongly that she would like to, uh, you know, have, uh, some camera help there at the, at the desk. She brought up an example, you know, I asked, well, so why have we had problems, um, you know, with, uh, some people stealing from it or whatever, and she brought up an incident that happened that was very innocent in that, uh, and I don't even know when the incident was, it was sometime in the past when they had the cameras working, but, uh, someone came in, went to pay their bill, um, we gave them the receipt, we, you know, and, and we put the receipt in the cash drawer, but didn't take the cash, you know, from them or whatever, and found ourselves short at the end of the day, and they were able to go back to the camera and figure out what happened. The people came in and paid the money the next day, you know? So she said that we have had, had incidents where the camera was critical to us, but, uh, uh, you know, most of all, it's the protection both for the, the workers and the, uh, uh, staff that, I mean, the workers, the citizens and the staff, that, uh, things were appropriate there at the, at the cash counter. Um, so, we could look at the full 25,000, or we could look at, hey, let's just do a couple cameras this year, let's do a couple next year, you know, we, we could take it in bite-sized chunks as well. Um, uh, but, uh, it's an option that we wanted to bring to the council so that we could decide, you know, to what level we wanted to begin improving our security, uh, uh, here at the city complex.
So Andy, um, let me ask two or three questions. One, tell me a little bit about the vandalism in the splash pad. I, I've been on the council a long time, and I haven't heard too much about that.
Yeah, so what happens at the splash pad, and that's why there's signs, um, to, you know, that they can't have skateboards and that type of things in the, in there, is because the, the rocks, um, last year, we had some paint there too, um, but, uh, the rocks are kind of like fake rocks, but they're very expensive fake rocks, and so when they kind of bounce off them and do tricks off them and everything, it breaks them in half, and and last year, we had to replace one of the rocks, and it was like $3,500 just to replace the fake rock.
Wow.
You know, with the, with the rock that can handle the water and the, and the chlorine and everything else, and, uh, so it's very expensive repair, plus, like I said, last year, um, we did have some, you know, some other, a little bit of paint and damage and things there, um, so, but principally, it's, it's the damage to the, to the various elements in the stream.
So that, that makes a difference.
Yeah.
So are the, the places that you put around the splash pad, are those fixed? I mean, number eights moved around a little bit.
The reason that, the reason that they're picked is because they're existing light poles, and if you look out there today, it looks like there's a camera there, but there is a camera there, but it doesn't work anymore, and so it was the, the cheapest place to put them, cause we have to pull new wires to them and then, uh, hang them on those poles. We could, we could really put them anywhere, but you'd have to, you'd have to, you know, get another pole to put them on.
So I was just curious about six, because it seems like we just approved the ballot box camera, which would look right there, but six would look farther into the park, is that?
Yeah, it kind of looks, and it looks kind of diagonally across the park, but you're right, you can see with the ballot, ball, ballot box camera, um, you know, some distance into the park there, um, you know, and that's why I say, I mean, the, the other thing we can do is we can look at it and we can say, well, we'd like to, you know, put on some cameras, but why don't we just put on cameras seven and eight for now and see how it goes? I mean, uh, certainly, we're not insistent on this, um, number of cameras, it, it, it was, uh, an effort to kind of, uh, figure out where we had coverage and where we could use better coverage, and this was kind of what we came up with, but, uh, as I say, we can, we can also take it in, uh, smaller bites, i- if you will, and, uh, you know, just do a couple now and, and do a couple in the next budget year, something of that nature. If we were gonna just do small bites, we'd recommend that we start with cash counter first, kind of in priority, if you will. We'd say, uh, go to the cash counter and then get the entry alcove on the exterior, cause if somebody's coming and going through the buildings, 90% chance they're coming through that, uh, door, um, and then to the splash pad, uh, you know, and then finally to those other interior cameras. That'd kind of be, at least on the staff side, our, uh, recommendation of priority.
So did we have other bids on this as well?
We, we, uh, found this Verkata camera system, um, because we were looking for a system that would work in Highland Glen, and, uh, and, uh, so when they were willing to offer us a free trial, um, you know, for a few months, uh, we put them up when we found that we liked them and that they were successful, and, uh, so when we were, when we had to add one to the ballot box, that's where we went, cause we knew it was a camera that, we'd had a trial and we knew that you could actually see something, you know, you could see the person's face, et cetera. Um, but, uh, the reason why we went with them for Highland Glen is because they can be in the elements and because they don't have to have, uh, you know, a, a special like, separate computer that it records to, it's kind of all internal to the camera, and then it connects to the cloud, and they save the data in the cloud. Um, so, uh, we, we built upon those efforts when putting this together, but we didn't get any other estimates for city hall, uh, and for what we're looking at here.
Thank you.
Andy, can you just remind us, I mean, a lot of us have different security systems. I have a Nest at my home and, and at some other properties. Help us understand why this type of system versus, I mean, Nest has outdoor, yeah, and I understand they, you know, they, they can go record 30, 60, 90 days. You have a lot of other systems. You mentioned you, you kind of, we don't have any other bids, but we all, why, why this system at this type of cost when there's a lot of other options? That we, you know, we brought it up earlier, there seems to be a lot of other options in the market at this time. Is this hardwired? Is this wifi-based? What is?
These, these ones are all gonna be hard, hardwired here. The ones that, uh, that at Highland Glen are connected through a cellphone card, um, so, the, uh, the reason for investigating these and the reason we went this way, Mayor, uh, uh, as far as this investigation, was, as I indicated, we found that they were, that, that it worked at Highland Glen and that we could go back, we could see the people, um, and that we were able to achieve the results we were trying to achieve. And the Highland Glen ones were certainly special because we needed them to be out in the elements, and we didn't want to put in air conditioner units to, you know, to have a, a, any type of computer-based ones that would connect back to a computer, and, uh, and, uh, they were able to work with a cellphone card down there. So this, this kind of, the Verkata brand, if you will, came to us, uh, through our investigations for Highland Glen. Um, uh, and then we, we had the needs here at city hall, so they gave us a trial camera, and we, we liked it, and kind of went from there. But are we, in answer to your question, which I believe you answered, we're asking, are we willing to investigate other security options? Certainly, you know, uh, we don't have, uh, any particular loyalty to Verkata, other than they're, they're a good brand, and we found they worked and fulfilled our needs, uh, in that regard.
Does the company who's doing council chambers not do anything like this also?
Erin, I'd have to turn to you.
Um, they're an AV company, I don't think that they do security cameras, but honestly, I haven't asked them. So, uh, thinking of cameras from a, a different standpoint.
So why do we need to pay a licensing fee?
That's, I mean, cause they make you. A, a, short answer, cause they make you, but, uh, that's, in theory, the fee that they give you for giving you the support and then for doing the cloud storage for you, is, is the way I understand it. Uh, cause each, each camera, you know, they, they, it, I don't know how many days store on the camera, and then it, you know, transfers it to the cloud. Um, so, uh, that's, that's, as I understand what that, that fee's for.
Andy, why can't we buy a, a self-contained system and host it on our own server?
And that's why I say, we're willing to investigate.
Is that too complicated?
We're willing to investigate other options, um, you know, not, we're, we're definitely not saying this is the only way to, uh, do this. This is a way that we found was successful for Highland Glen, and it was a, a way to, uh, meet the needs that were required us, of us, uh, by the state and the county for the voting box, um, cause they were high enough quality to, to do that for us. Um, and so we got this, this quote for the rest of the facility. Uh, on the staff side, we want to be very clear, um, this is an item, you know, sometimes we come to you and you can tell from our presentation that, hey, you know, and then this is, this is something that we feel like we ought to improve the security here at city hall. Um, that part of it, we're, we're passionate about. As far as, you know, is Verkata the only way to go? Um, that, that is something that we, you know, we'd be willing to investigate other options if that's the direction of council. I believe the chief has something.
Mayor, can I, can I just address, uh, specifically Councilman Balls' question, uh, about managing your own storage? So, as you know, uh, law enforcement has gotten into the business of recording a lot of things over the years, especially the last five, seven years, we, we've implemented body cameras. When we, Long Peak Police Department first went into body cameras, we started to manage our own data, or video, if you will. That quickly became an overwhelming process, not only for the officers that were trying to manage it then, but then our IT people trying to manage that data. It becomes, how do you store it? How, what does it cost to store? And how do you retrieve what you're looking for? If you're looking for something specific, it becomes very problematic if you don't have the software to be able to put in the parameters of what you're looking for. Companies like Verkata, and I'm not, I'm not pitching Verkata at all, we're not a customer. I, actually, the name came through us because there's somebody that's come to me and wanting to do something in our building and, and, and in the community, and I've just pushed them aside, cause we have other options that we've used at, at our police department. But to, to manage your own storage and your own data and your own video is, is problematic at best. Um, we, we utilize a service to do our body cameras and our video cameras that, it does cost us money, but it's certainly worth, if I need a video, I can go out and find it in less than five minutes. Because of how the video is, is stored, the parameters and the things that the officers are required to put in to begin with, this all comes with the software, that I can go back and look for dates and times, I can look for specific locations, I can look for specific calls, I can narrow it down to, to vehicles if I, if I need to, or people if, if I need to, if that's what I need to do. But to manage your own, I, I would recommend against that, because I've been down that road, and it just does not work. It doesn't work at all. We didn't have luck with it anyway.
Yeah, I just did a quick calculation, a 120 days worth of video storage would be 30 terabytes of data, which is a huge.
Yeah, yeah, video cloud, well, video storage is costly. That's the bulk, I mean, the cameras that law enforcement uses are fairly cheap for what they do. Where the companies make their money is the video storage and the ability to retrieve it, the software that you use. I personally am a huge advocate of what we use, because again, I can go back and find what I need, and I don't have to spend a lot of time doing it, and I know that it's there.
And you can put in multiple search parameters to.
Correct.
Narrow it down, otherwise.
Correct. Now, I don't know how Verkata's software works and how you retrieve that kind of information, I just know that what we use for, for body cameras and video cameras or dash cameras works very great.
So you could just type in, um, vehicle four, um, between 12 and 1 a.m. on Saturday of a date, it'll pull up that specific.
Well, I, it's, it's not that simple, I, I've gotta know, I've, I've said, I have to know dates and times and specifically maybe the officers that are involved, but once I know that, I can start narrowing it down very quickly to what I need.
All right.
As comparing to taking hours to find one video, it takes me 10 minutes now.
How long do you store your video for?
Depending, so we have a retention schedule, depending on what the interaction is, it will depend on how long we hold on to it. So, uh, let's say a traffic stop where we don't issue a citation, we hold on to that for 120 days. If we issue a citation, we hold on it for 24 months. Um, if it's something that's critical, that's, involves criminal activity, we have a retention schedule, it can be up to five, seven, and some, some things we hold indefinitely, we'll never get rid of.
Thank you. I think it's a great idea to eventually have some kind of surveillance video, especially at the cash drawer up front. I would be interested in a little bit more research, just as Chief Williams talking about storage and search parameters and things, to make sure that whatever we get is going to be the most efficient and effective to use as well.
Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, if I remember talking to Roy, there's, to what Chief William talked about, Verkata has that ability as far as search parameters, alerts, even that type of, um, system.
Yeah, they, they have, uh, and I don't want to say exact parameters, but they have the ability to, uh, do those kind of, uh, search parameters and, and, you know, help you in finding, you know, what you're searching for.
Well, I think, for me, I think we have to be really careful on how often we're gonna use this data. I mean, we might be paying a lot of money for a Cadillac product, when what we're really saying is, hey, we might have an occasional situation where someone dropped off, and we use the kitten situation, we wanted to understand when the kittens were dropped off. We're not looking at these on daily. I think that for your public safety, it's a different situation where, you know, they, they might have individuals in there, you know, doing, you know, it's, it's a different type of situation we're operating where we might not look even every 30 days, even with the data. That, I, I, I think we have to have it, but I don't know if we have to have the exact moment, cause, you know, what happened, you know, with the, with, for the cost to do that. But, you know, I don't know if it'd be wise, you know, we only have one bid, you know, this, a little bit online, it appears that the Verkata's a very good brand, but it appears there's two or three other competitors that seem to be reasonably close to it, and I, I think they're a different type of camera, a different system, then what we're talking is a Nest, which is wifi-based, you know, if you're, you're internet, then this is more wired, this might have some, some different, you know, aspects to it, uh, but, and I don't, you know, it is $25,000, I, you know, I think the council's been saying maybe it'd be wise to, maybe just get a couple other bids, just so we kind of have a, a feeling of, is this in the realm of the same quality? Is that where the other council feel?
Yeah, I think we all agree that we need to have security cameras, but, um, let's just see what else is out there at a lower cost.
Yeah, and we're happy to do that.
There are any Ford options.
That's, that's what I, I was alluding to, is, you know, if the council wants us to do a little bit more research, we'll, we'll check it out, and, but it sounds like resoundingly that the council agrees with the staff in that it would be a good idea to, uh, improve our security options here, um, but we'll, we'll do some comparisons and, uh, and then bring it back, uh, you know, when we have, uh, you know, some, some additional data.
But, you know, Andy, like you mentioned, we, we see our splash pad, we know we had some damages there this last winter, or even early spring, and so it'd be nice to understand, do we have some bad actors that keep coming to the park that we need, need to get a hold of, you know, or what really happened there, so. And unfortunately, it appears a lot of city parks are having some damages, we need to be sensitive, that we might be spending, you know, 10,000 here, but we're, we don't take care of it, surveillance, it, it could be a lot higher. And we want them to know our surveillance, you know, that, you know, we don't necessarily want to hide it, we want to say, hey, we have this here, we'll know if you're here, and, and we know what's going on.
Well, I know there are some cities that have the whole surveillance sign with fake cameras, and it seems to do the job also.
But if, but if someone gets hurt and they see a camera, they're always gonna say, why didn't you have that being recorded? I mean, I think in this area where you have water and you have some things going on, it might be wise to have some live cameras. But I understand, we could put some other dummy cameras, why I say that, that, where we still can see the area, but there's others maybe showing them that's the area, so.
On a dummy camera, and, and I, I'll let Rob speak to this, but I've understood that, uh, these days, uh, that's not a good idea for communities to have, uh, dummy cameras. It's either you have the cameras and they work, or you don't have the cameras, uh, is, is kind of what I've understood, uh, for some of the events that have happened over the last few years, but, uh, not that I'm the expert on that.
Well, and if these cameras are working, we keep having an area that keeps getting tagged with graffiti, is the little bridge over there off of North County, they, well, if we keep have it, there is a certain cost, where we need to see if we can find those bad actors.
Yeah.
And, and, and get it taken care of.
And those type of situations, and like you said, there are probably some competitors to Verkata, but those type of situations are where we kind of, you know, from the public works side, we got onto Verkata, cause, cause we can use them with a cellphone card, and we can put them up out there where we don't have data options, et cetera, and they're, they're proving effective for us.
So is, if everyone, do we want to do a continuation on this motion?
Yeah.
No, we have to make that motion.
You have to make a motion on that. Title number seven.
I'll make that motion. I move that the Highland City Council continue the motion, uh, to purchase the eight security cameras for city hall and the splash pad, um, for the city staff to do more research and bring us back a couple other proposals. Is that, is that enough instruction?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Scott, second by Tim. This is the continue. Motion to continue. The, the continuance is four to zero. We'll now move on to item number eight, which is a maintenance agreement in the French Country Estates area, and I believe.
Who's? It's me, I'm filling in for Kelly on this one.
I can't reverse.
And I will say, I should have texted him, I didn't. Honestly, Mayor and Council, I'm blown away with how quickly you've moved through the action items, congratulations. So, Todd Train intended to be here, but he's not, so I'll, hopefully we don't have any questions for him. Tyler, will you advance for me? Thank you. So if you remember, so after long years of discussion, on July nineteenth, council approved the encroachment policy agreement, and, sorry, encroachment policy and maintenance agreement. So, and our plan was, as we've worked out with council, to hit certain subdivisions one at a time to go through this. However, this one's coming out of order to you essentially, it's a, it's a resident request. So, what you're seeing, the resident to the east on this map is building a new home, and while they are putting in their landscaping, they requested to do some additional landscaping on our property, and so we didn't want to wait, make them wait, but we did want them to go through the process, which comes to you to get a maintenance plan for this area before they can do any, a maintenance agreement. So, what they are requesting, will you go to the next slide, Tyler? Well, actually go back one more, I'm sorry. So, you see the, the home built to the west and then the home being built to the east. In the middle of them is a drainage easement, it's a, it's a pre-existing drainage. The front of it is just weeds, we have, we do not maintain this because it is just a drainage area, and so it does slope off pretty dramatically after about six feet and where you can't see it, but the front part you can see from the street, it is just weeds because we do no maintenance there. Can you go ahead? What they're proposing is to, you don't see this on the plan, but to grass the park strip, it's actually already partially grassed due to encroachment, that has already happened. But to finish grassing the park strip and then to put some rock mulch behind the park strip, just for a short amount of area, before the area essentially slopes off and you can no longer see it. So, we're talking about nine hundred square feet, six hundred sixty square feet of rock, three hundred and twenty of grass in the park strip. Can you move forward for me? And then, so we have a motion to approve and a motion to deny for you, council. The only, the only stipulations we have is, so again, that it goes back to the plan, and because they didn't include the grass in the original proposal, just to include that as well.
So, Erin, can I ask a couple of questions to clarify?
Yes.
So, the part behind the sidewalk going down the slope is basically zero scape, right?
It's just weeds, it's just natural vegetation.
But their proposal
No, no, what are their proposals?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it's just zero scape, just rock.
Okay, it's zero scape, and, but the park strip is going to be grassed.
Correct.
So the only part that'll be irrigated will be
Would be the park strip. So while it is, you know, more water, it's a small amount of water. Staff did review it and didn't have any concern with it, we felt like this is, this is, to, Rob quoted this, you know, this is a good area where a maintenance agreement makes sense for what they're asking.
I kind of personally think this is the reason we did maintenance agreements, it's kind of helped this, I like, I love that they're doing zero scape behind the park strip, I mean, I guess the only other thing you could say, hey, do you want to zero scape the park strip, that we will, a lot of other people have their areas with, it's grass in the front of their house, it's all park strip there, but I think this is the reason we did maintenance agreements.
I agree.
I'm fine with it. What does Todd have to do with this?
Todd, it's a, it's a home by Mill Haven, so Todd, Todd is involved with the home that's being built to the east.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments or ready for motion?
Bernie, just because you've done the encroachment maintenance and worked on all this, I just want to make sure that this is what we were aiming for and complies, and your thoughts?
Yeah, no, I think it's what we were aiming for, I think it's good. I feel sad Todd's not here, so we can harass him about it a little bit.
Yeah, where's Todd?
Oh, unfortunate. No, but I think this is what they're there for.
So we need to be aware that you probably, here's the neighbor to the east, that means the neighbor to the west, if they bring an application in for maintenance, you'd probably be amenable to them as long as they get the landscape. They've already encroached, they've already got landscape in front there of this area, which is retention, and they might also be doing it soon.
So we're actually doing the agreement with the neighbor to the west, who has already encroached.
Okay.
It's just, it's just them, one, one agreement, and then the private property owners are working on amongst themselves payment and maintenance.
Okay.
Does it make more sense to do this, like, as I'm working on that list of subdivisions and maintenance agreements, does it make sense to wait and do the whole thing at once at our next meeting, or does it make sense to do them one at a time?
They requested us to move this forward because they have landscapers on site and they just wanted to get it done, so that's why we pushed it ahead.
Okay.
Would you guys like to have any comments on this? Council? Are you okay with the comments? Brian, go ahead, come on.
Brian Braithwaite, Highland resident. The state has made a big deal about trying to get rid of some of the park strips and be able to convert them into zero scape or something else. I think it's odd that we would have no property behind this and want to put that grass in there, it just seems like it would make more sense if that was just gravel or zero scape or something that, because it's, it's a natural strip across the road, if you look at that picture, you can see that there is no park strip that has grass in front of it, that's one of our retention areas. So it just seems more natural, part of it is grassed already, I can see that, but it seems to me it would make more sense if it wasn't. I mean, you can make any decision you want, it just seems odd that we now as a city allowed people to take the park strip out, the state pays you to take park strips out and put zero scape or other kinds of things, and for this not even be in front of any home, it just seems odd.
You know, I, I think what Brian brings up, that it is a good concern about, do we want to encourage zero scape? There is already encroaching there, just, we have to be consistent for the
They've actually already encroached the entire park strip, so at the time of the image, it was only half of it, it's already all been grassed, again, through encroachment. So we, you know, it is, it is our property and we could say that needs to become zero scape, but, just, just for your information.
So, but they're going to do zero scape everything behind it?
Correct.
You know, I, and I understand what Mr. Braithwaite's saying, it makes sense, but at the same time, we basically, they'd incur quite a bit of cost to pull all that area out that they've already done, right? But I think the money would be better spent to do the zero scaping behind.
I think that's a good discussion point, because if we have others, we're going to enter into maintenance, are we going to be okay, and we have to say we're okay with park strips, where we, you know, and then encourage zero scape. In the code, in our, in our, you know, there in the maintenance is they couldn't have more than twenty-five hundred feet
Sure.
Of landscape, which this is not meeting that as an aspect, but this is total city property. What's the rest, Phil? I mean, there's, I can see
Can I ask to, Rob, okay, so, so to Mayor's point, like, we had a maximum irrig- irrig- able? I kept, that's my
Actually, I'm not sure whether it's irrigable or irrigatable, I've seen both.
I'm going to go with irrigatable because I can pronounce it. There was a maximum amount of irrigatable property for maintenance agreements, but can we abs, can we say you can have no irrigatable property with our policy?
Yes, the council could put whatever conditions they would like.
Yeah, this one, I'm just thinking about it a little bit more, and we focus so much on encroachments in open space subdivisions, and so this is a little bit different than that, right?
Yeah, it was, yeah.
It's a non-open space.
Yeah, so we have so few of those, so now I'm kind of thinking, like, what other areas are there?
We'll find others that have been, been encroached in the front areas.
Mayor, if you are thinking about adding an additional stipulation, maybe we could put a pause on this item and skip over it. I am trying to text Todd and he's headed this direction now, if that, if that will matter to your discussion.
Will, will it matter to have the developer, the home builder, contractor here to discuss this? I mean, I understand they've already put it in, I think the decision is, do we want it zero scape or do we want to keep it as grass? I think to me
Well, we're just talking about the park strips already been put in, but are we going to really go around with the maintenance agreements and make people pull out the park strips and mandate that they zero scape them? I think we should encourage it, and if people
Well, that's, that's the problem, they're putting this in, and I agree that they probably jumped the gun here, but, you know, that's, the reason we're, we're looking at applications because they're building a home, and I thought they were going to finish the other half on the east side, but it sounds like, you know, Erin, are you saying, or Andy, is this whole area already done in front of this whole retention area?
The grass is. The rock, the zero scape has not been
How long's that been in?
So the, hmm, as you can see on the aerial, part of it was already done a while ago, I think the, the, the second half, the grass, to my understanding, is new.
So, and they put a sprinkling system in that park
Yes.
Strip, right, but they're going to zero scape everything behind.
Correct.
Council input.
Well, I'm just thinking, like, philosophically, we don't want it to be a thing where just because you've already put it in, that makes it okay.
Correct.
And that's kind of the opposite. I'll be honest, I haven't, I haven't thought about this one enough, I haven't thought enough about the, then, I've been so focused on open space subdivisions that I haven't thought about this enough, but
Yeah, I just keep thinking about, we're going to have to do maintenance agreements with people along trails that have grassed up to the trail, and so then are we going to go and require zero scape and have them take out all the grass, you know, up to trails instead?
I, I just think you have to be careful with that.
Yeah.
I like zero scaping, we should really promote it, but I don't know if we want people to start ripping things out.
And I know not all zero scape means it's actually, going to say water, yeah, it, it attracts heat as well, so you have to have, you have to have some grass, some rock, some natural vegetation, but you do have to have some grass in order to be able not to draw too much heat, that it actually retains more water. I was reading up on whole water conservation the other night.
That's why the CUP recommends partial grass, they gave us a lot of examples.
Well, and to Brian Braithwaite's point, a future item that will be coming to council is a consideration of updating our ordinances to be more encouraging of water-wise standards, which is a requirement of CUP, if you want Highland residents to be able to still qualify for flip-your-strip-type programs. If we don't update our code, residents aren't eligible.
So, it's interesting you say flip the strip here, the city owns the property, so I'm not, I'm not sure, they go do an application, they don't own the property, they're, they're flipping, if you want to say. This, this is, I, I see the, a little bit of the pause here, because you're going to hold it, this is, is this an opportunity to zero scape in this area? Or, like you said, they've already put some in, I'm not interested in really trying to also have people have landscaping by trails, to also have them tear it all out at this time.
Yeah.
So, that's just the consistency. Okay, well, is anyone else input? Tim, any input?
I'd wait for
Wait for Todd?
You'd rather wait for Todd?
Well, I'd, I'd agree with Bernie, I have
Tim, can you turn on your microphone just for our recording? Sorry.
Would you rather continue this item?
Yes.
Okay, so you're favored to continue, is that where you're at? Is to go look at this and continue it?
That, that's where I'm at, but I mean, I will take full responsibility for, I should have thought this part of it through a little bit better.
So, so
It's Brian, Brian's stuck it.
So the, but the risk you run here is they may say, okay, to bring the landscapers back is going to incur us a lot more cost, we're just going to forget about the maintenance agreement, so then you're left with a strip of weeds, and I don't know if they would do that, but it seems like there's a little timing here, because they wanted zero scape most of it, it seems like. I don't know why we would want to throw a roadblock on this particular one.
Erin, how many other similar situations? I mean, I know you're not the encroachment guru, that would be Kelly, but
I have Kelly on tap.
Yeah, that's what I'm
This, this is kind of a, you know, I don't think the cities went and looked at all type of encroachments like this, I mean
A majority of them certainly are in open space neighborhoods, this is going to be a unique situation.
Very much so. I bet Todd knows.
Would you like to continue? Would you like to make a motion here? What would you like to do?
Can we just, can, is, is Todd really going to come?
He's, yes. He said he's on his way, I don't know where he is on
Would you like to move this item and we go to number nine and come back to number eight?
Yes.
Okay, then we will now move on to item number nine, which is discussion on moderate income housing elements of the general plan and implementation plan. And that is going to be
This one's me. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a discussion item and also a request from staff to get some input from the council on how you'd like us to move forward with this item, especially with the planning commission, and then ultimately brought back to you for final approval. This is an update we're going to be making due to a change in state law to the city's general plan regarding moderate income. So just, by way of background, in two thousand and eight, the city adopted its general plan, and we included a moderate income housing element in that. Twenty eighteen, the state legislature amended state law to require certain strategies, kind of had a buffet, and you had to pick certain strategies from that list to incorporate into your general plan. So in two thousand and nineteen, the city did that, and with this year, the state legislature has again amended the general plan requirements regarding moderate income to tweak that buffet of options and now to require what they are calling an implementation plan, a, a plan for how the city will carry out those strategies within a reasonable timeframe. So, under HB four sixty-two, this was the, the bill that amended state law and general plan, they have twenty-four different strategies, the, the options, you are, each city is supposed to have at least three options, that gets you to compliance. If you have five options selected, you get what they call priority in terms of certain funding requests, so transportation and ARPA funds are what they're looking at. What that actually means in, in practice, we're not quite sure, because the requirement to have our general plan updated goes into effect in October, so we'll see how that plays out. And then with that, we're supposed to have an implementation plan, which sets specific benchmarks and measures and benchmarks for implementing each moderate income housing strategy, and then, but can provide flexibility in how we go about it. The, the guidance we've received is that it should set up kind of a clear course of achievable goals and, and actions to take, to carry out this. The city's already in a fairly good part, place, the city's general plan has a good set of policies and then goals, so we're just kind of tweaking it a little bit, and then asking for council direction, whether you'd like to adopt more or change anything further, give us guidance as we take this item to the planning commission on how to amend our general plan. So, that is very small text. This is our current general plan, and we have a policy of proactively encourage development of moderate income in senior housing as follows, and there are, our implementation currently is, we examine regulations for senior housing projects, line use code, oh no, sorry, these are the proposals. So we, we have a goal already in our general plan for senior housing and moderate income. These are some recommendations for how we could do the implementation, exploring how we could eliminate parking or reduce parking requirements for senior housing, see if there's some mixed-use modifications you might want to make, especially for the town center, exploring partnerships. If you recall, we had a, a contract, the Community Block Development Grant project, we had an agreement that the city signed that made us eligible to apply for that, and the council actually had a question then of, well, if we're signing up for this, does this mean we have to accept funds and then, you know, do certain types of projects? We said, no, we actually never really had applied for it. One of our thoughts was, maybe, you know, the council, an implementation measure is, we go look and see what those options are, and if there's anything that's worthwhile, bring it back to the council for further consideration, and then maybe tweak our accessory dwelling unit if necessary, to see if there's any kind of streamlining we could do to make sure those are more easily established. So, this is kind of the discussion of what you think we would like to do. So we currently have kind of our, our main options that we have, the city has chosen is to look at senior housing, to look at accessory dwelling units, and, I'm going up the, to have mixed-use zones in commercial areas, that would be this area here, the city adopted kind of a flex use, where we have a commercial center, then higher density areas nearby, if there's anything with that, and then And then potentially look at the, those grant programs. Say, there are a lot of other options in state law, a lot of those involve really modifying zoning to allow higher density, really dedicating funds to subsidize or support more moderate income housing or more density types. Okay? Yes. And I'm not, we, when Kelly and I were looking at, we're not sure if any of those were something the council might be interested in.
No.
Which is what we thought, so we didn't propose any of those. We were just looking at what, basically what the general plan already was and how we could kind of add an implementation plan to meet the minimum requirements of state law. Let's see. And I've already kind of gone through. So that's just kind of an overview, so we're looking at, do you have any feedback for us as we tweak slightly a general plan to include these, the, how we carry out the goals that are already in the plan?
So, Rob, let me just make comment, because we've talked about this several times when I've been on the council.
Yes.
And I know the state legislature changes things. I'm not so sure, I mean, there's federal mandates, state mandates, I think some of this, sometimes I'm a little suspicious it's driven by developers who wants more high density because they make more money. I'm sorry. But, you know, we've got, we've kind of tried to meet this with the Boyer project up there, as well as the town center, and actually our town center basically has all been approved. There's nothing more we can do here, I don't think. And, and then up in Sky Ridge, we approved some years ago some senior housing, some town homes. I personally think we've already met the requirements, because we also have the ability for people to have accessory dwellings and things. So, you know, I think we could look like, look at what we're already doing and just kind of put some timelines on it, because we're already doing it. And this idea of trying to create senior housing, I think is always a misnumber, because it's like the Boyer people came in and said, we're going to create all this senior housing. Well, I'll tell you who's moving in those houses, are young families with kids. That's not senior housing, and that's what I'm seeing, because they're in my LDS congregation. And we do get occasional couple that moves into the town homes. So, I, I don't know, it seems like we're already meeting the requirements if we just look at the five things, because one thing in this is I read through all this stuff, they talk a lot about transit stations, well, we're never going to have tracks or front runner through Highland. So a lot of this doesn't really apply to us on the five stipulations. And I guess the question I do have real quick for Tyler, they talk about TIPS funds? Do we get much TIPS funds? Do you know what I'm talking about? So if we meet these criteria and things, we get more transportation, TIPS funds, they call them? Does that make sense? TRP, EBS funds? It talks about that in there. Do we get any now? I, you know?
I don't think we get a lot, because those are separate, those are kind of priority projects.
Right.
And they're separate from, you know, the class C road funds that we do get, and those aren't related to the moderate income. It's more like, from my limited understanding is, you know, if someone wants to redevelop a, a new road, to put a new quarter, maybe the state legislature will make a special grant for it, but Highland hasn't really gone out for that.
Right.
So I don't, when I was looking, I didn't see much of a need to go for, you know, the, the extra and try to get our priorities.
Right.
We already kind of, city has already kind of handled a lot of it, and I think, I, I thought this would be, you know, I, I fully agree with you, Councilmember Smith, that the city's kind of already done its moderate income, and it's mostly just, we'll just say, you know, we'll keep, I anticipate how we'll do the implementation plan is we'll continue to review things, you know, put language of, we'll monitor things, see if there's any tweaks needed, but there's no new push for anything, which is how I think it's going to be phrased, because, I mean, honestly, part of the, the issue with Highland, not issue, problem, it's just the city's mostly developed, it's.
Right.
There, there's nowhere else really for much of this type of stuff to go, even if there was a desire.
I agree with Councilmember Smith.
Me too, let's do what we usually do.
Okay.
Okay. I think you've got your discussion there.
I think we got some good direction. Thank you for the direction.
We, we still, we have not seen the representative from Millhaven yet on item number eight. Would you rather have us, council, do you want to go on to item number 10, waiting for item number eight, or would you like to go back to item number eight? Okay, as we're going, I'm okay going number 10. Okay, number 10, our first item on this is Mountain Ridge Park update. This will be important, I think, for all of us to kind of follow the dollars.
Todd is going to love that he gets to listen to us talk about Mountain Ridge Park again, so that's totally fair. Okay, Mayor and Council, Tyler, could you go to the next slide for me? I'm going to kind of give you an overview as to where we're headed with our discussion this evening. So we're going to talk about, I've got some handouts for you, I'm going to send your direction. We're going to talk about, a lot about the finances with Mountain Ridge Park. First, what's already been approved, yes, here, I'm going to send this down. So take one map and one Word doc. One, what council has already approved. Two, what council, what the city has either committed to spend or has already spent for this park. Three, what are what we're calling the priority unfunded items, which is essentially to finish out the phase we're currently working on. Next, we'll talk about the other unfunded items, thinking of potential future phases or essentially phase areas where we're not working on currently. And then we'll talk about the additional funding options that the council can select from, give us direction on those, and then moving forward for next steps. If you'll go ahead for me, Tyler. So some of this will be a review, we've talked about this a number of times, and I know you can't really see that on the screen, so I've got the same thing in your handouts that I just passed out to you. So first is what, what council's already approved to be spent towards Mountain Ridge Park? So, the sale of, the remainder from the sale of Spring Creek Park, sale to Patterson Storage, Dry Creek Property Sale, a street tree account that was originally intended to be used for street trees, but could, we, we decided can be used for other purposes, including trees within the park. A portion of what we are doing in this current phase is tied to our enterprise funds and to our road money, and so we're using a portion of our road, of those funds to fund this. Patterson gave us a generous donation that we're also putting towards the park, but then the bulk of it is coming from our ARPA funds, almost $2.3 million, of which we have received all of them. We got the second tranche last week or two, three weeks ago, about three weeks ago.
Erin, can I ask you a quick question?
Please.
So the Patterson donation, $10,000, they also donated $10,000 in the foundation a while ago.
So that's not accounted for, it's accounted for in a different location.
No, different location, so they've actually donated $20,000.
Okay.
Because it's been earmarked for this park.
For the park.
Pickleball.
And I got, I'll ask you when we get to that spot of how much money is in the foundation for this park. I was under the assumption it was about $20,000 total.
That's right now, the last I heard, and I need to talk to the treasurer, is about $45,000.
Oh, more than I was thinking.
Yeah.
So that's wonderful news. Okay. So these numbers will be updated, reflect the others that. But yeah, so these are, these are city-approved money we already have in the bank that council has given us the green light to spend on. Any more questions on these numbers? Okay, Tyler, if you'll advance for me. The next is what we have already spent or committed to spending to finish out, if you'll look at the phase that we're doing. So if you'll look at your map, again, what we're doing is, so it's in the white area as well as the playground, as well as the, well, really the wider, so the, the first phase. So parking lot and 10-400 North Improvements, sumps as well as restroom area pumps, so sumps to help with drainage, and part of that does go into essentially, it's part of the, the parking lot and 10-400 North Improvements, it's, it's kind of an all-in-one in there. The pavilions that council's approved and we've purchased, the restrooms, the playground, and then services to help us build the park. So we have enlisted a construction management firm as well as Blue Line, who is doing the design work for us. And so the construction management and design firm, those, what we've put in there are estimates as to what we expect to spend to finish out this first phase of the park. We've spent less than that, but that's our expected spend there. So in total, that adds up to a little over $5 million, which means we are actually, you get to listen to about Mountain Ridge Park again, Todd. We're actually about $250,000 short compared to what council has told us we can use to spend.
But if you take the foundation money, you're $200,000.
Correct, we're, we're less short. And there, there are other donors that we didn't include in that first, donors who have pledged, I should say, but because we don't have the money, we didn't include it in that first group of.
But I think you're just really $200,000 short, because the money's in the foundation across to $50,000, so.
Absolutely. Any question on this table, council? Okay.
Yes.
Did you prepare all this, Erin?
This is a, this is a combined effort between Andy, Tyler, and myself.
Okay, this is great.
If you'll move ahead for me, Tyler. So I wanted to just give you, show you the map, you've got it in front of you. I'm going to start talking about something called the gap areas, and you can't see them on the screen, but you'll see them on the map, they're the legend as to what colors go with what gap areas. So the colors are, are areas we have not bid out yet that are not inclusive in that committed or already spent funds. And so those we are currently getting bid and will have back to you for the September 6 meeting, so this is really a precursor to our September 6 meeting where we need a few more decisions from council. But in reference to that, we'll move on to priority areas that we, we feel like we need funding for. So I know that's unreadable on your screen, but hopefully you can read it on your handout. So these are the, to properly finish out the phase of parking lot, playground, restroom area, and baseball field. That's what is underneath the current phase unfunded items, where we, we don't have committed funds for those. And so most of those, am I on the right one? I am. Are, were actually pending bids, and so I don't want, you know, we don't have hard numbers on most of those. Again, they're coming back September 6. However, staff and I guesstimated the total of all of those, again, the unfunded ones, would be $1.3 million. So if you add that to the about $250,000 or, you know, thousand that we talked about earlier, you're looking at about one point, almost $1.6 million that we are short to fully finish that, the phase that I just described to you, Mayor and Council. Any questions? Next, we'll look at, so that again is just that phase. What else is it going to cost us to finish the park? And again, we're, we are getting bids currently on all of this. It's a lot more. So the original bid that we had to finish the park was, well, not the original. One of the many iterations of the bids that we had to finish the park was a year ago for $8 million. Again, that was a year ago, and that did not include baseball fields, nor a basketball court, nor a ninja course, and so I, we know that that number is low at this point. And again, we will have that for you. I'm sorry that we don't have all of the numbers at this point, but we wanted to give you a precursor of where we are leading up to September 6. Because if you'll go to the next slide, Tyler, so you have this on your last page, potential extra revenue sources. Before I dive into these, Mayor and Council, please know that this, so one thing I wanted to say first is, it's all, it has been current, the current staff's understanding, and what we have planned is to phase this park because we did not have all of the funds available for it, to our knowledge.
Right.
So, but we understand that there is a desire to do as much as we can, and so I've got a, we have, we've combined a list of potential resources that council can choose from and choose different amounts from. But again, this is not, this is not something that staff has, is saying you should do this. This is council, we want your direction on these potential sources for fund use.
If not, if Erin's nervous, this is just looking across where could sources come from. It's, and so we're looking, we're saying, okay, and, and so this is not staff saying, do it this way, they're just giving you.
We're giving you options and things to think about, Mayor and Council.
Erin, you mentioned that there was money committed from donors that we're not counting.
Correct.
Because.
That's in here. That's on the other, that's on your back page, the potential.
Just because we don't have it in the bank, essentially, and so.
How, how reliable do you think that?
To, all indications are reliable, so we have three individual donors who have committed...
Where, where is this?
Sorry, will you go to the next one for me, Tyler? And I know, I'm sorry, you guys won't be able to see, yes. So individual donors about.
Why don't we go through this list by, Tim, can we just wait? Let's go through it and they'll, and they'll come up where you have your private donors.
So the first one is our 6800 West reimbursement. So we anticipate being done with that this fiscal year and getting reimbursement of $550,000 that we can use to wherever, wherever we would like, or wherever you would like, I should say, Mayor and Council, excuse me. In addition, we are going to have some money in our town center exaction funds, we've talked about this recently as well.
We have pizza delivery here. Brittany hooks us up with everything.
Thanks, buddy.
Hey, thank you.
Happy birthday.
What?
Do you want to?
Is it his birthday today?
It's his birthday.
Oh, no, Anderson, come back!
Hey, come here, we have, come here, we have something for you.
We have to sing happy birthday.
Come on over here.
Right here.
Is this the last thing you want for your birthday?
We're singing you happy birthday.
On three, one, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Anderson. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday. And thank you for the pizza.
Seventeen. Man, you look like you're some responsible parent. Thanks, buddy.
Anderson, thank you.
Thank you for the pizza.
Love you.
Okay, let's go back on our fundings. We, we have our reimbursement there on 6800, then you, we have the town center exactions and the next one.
That will end up with 300 net, that again, council can allocate to the park or another location you choose. So parks impact fee revenue. So for this fiscal year, we budgeted $1.5 million is what we expected to get in parks impact fee revenue, which translates to about 250 new homes. Now, we recognize that building is slowing down, or could, has the potential to slow down, and so one option council has is to allocate, say, a million dollars of that. As we, as Tyler mentioned earlier, so we have about, we have $5.6 million in that fund. 3.6 will go towards, we have 3.6 remaining in bond payments, and the other $2 million is what we talked about earlier from those sales that has already been, council's already told us spend on on Mountain Ridge. So if you wanted to start, you know, if you wanted to not keep 3.6 million in there for the bond payment, but use some of that, that is an option for you, as to whatever number you choose there.
Erin, this makes, okay, so we saw a slide that we have $5.6 million in our park fund, right, the capital account. 3.6 of that is if we paid off the bonds totally right now that we're doing 2027, we could retire the entire bond, that there's, that is five years away from where we could retire.
But we don't know how much it'll cost us to pay off that bond.
No, the bond would be 3.6.
Yeah, but there's usually a fee to pay it off early.
Or we could have a savings, there could be a savings.
Or we could have a savings.
Okay, interest. This extra million you're talking about, Erin, is above and beyond any money in the parks capital. This is to be, this is being generated this year off of new building permits. That would be, if we generated a million dollars, remember you saw building permits cost, that we, it's $5,854 per permit, we would estimate that we'd do 170 building permits this year, and that would generate a million dollars towards this park impact fee.
Correct.
So what, what's your estimates? I mean, things have slowed down.
You know, a month in.
You still have a lot of people coming in?
We do, but, so Boyer is our big unknown, right? And it fluctuates so much where they'll come in and they'll take, you know, pull a ton of permits, and then we don't see them for a little while, so it's really hard to use one month's worth of data to give you an accurate picture, council member.
But I think we're, some of it is, let's assume we pulled the million and we were off. Just if we're off on our numbers, it was only $5,000. Just if we're off on our numbers, it was only 500. We, we still have five years, we have all the money already in the bond payment to pay it. We have five years to capture back whatever we pulled, if we, if we got it here.
I don't have a problem with that, I'd like to pay the bond off pretty soon.
No, but that, that, that gives us an opportunity to use that revenue.
In case we need it. Yeah, that's great.
Is that clear on what we're trying to look at as the bond impact fees? Everyone understand what's kind of happening there? Okay.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, councilmember.
I have a question. I mean, we're all familiar with invoice factoring. Is there an equivalent for municipalities to do something like that? And would that offset projected inflation?
What do you mean by, how would we invoice factor like?
Well, the equivalent for a municipality, for example, we're getting 550,000. Well, that's a certainty. So if we called upon, let's say, got an advance on that, I'm just wondering how much that money would cost to do that advance? And then would that offset the potential for the inflation? Because inflation is so high right now, the money is relatively inexpensive, especially for a municipality that has a high rating, and because this money is pretty much for sure. So if we could, just for example, if we could factor that and get it at 1%, but we save 10% on inflation, that seems like a pretty big win. But that's, and we could advance a particular part of the park by 550,000. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yes, it does. We'd have to look at that, I mean, typically there's, it's harder for cities to just get loans that easily, there's a lot more steps involved when cities.
You'd think there'd be less.
So, so Tim, that's like, right now, here's.
Think, I mean, it's a sure bet, it's not like we're going in for a tire loan.
It's not, it's not on the private side, they would love to lend to us, it's more a lot of controls over city finances that are designed to protect the public.
But it's not a loan per se, it's factoring the, anyway.
Tim, if you, so right now, we have 3.6 million sitting in the park capital account. Okay. We could say, hey, we have five years to pay that off. We have, we're going to have revenue coming in each year. In a sense, you're saying, why don't we take some of that revenue, which we think we're going to generate this year? And, and we have a little bit of a safety net there for the park bond payment, but, but we could then take some of that money now, because we have five years still to, you know, we've already funded it fully right now, it's 100% funded, what's required to take care of the bond.
Right. Essentially, you, you do it, we're invoice factoring against ourselves.
Yeah, correct.
Which is a lot safer, and we can, we can do that much easier.
But I still think, before I can make that decision, I'd like to know if there's a penalty to pay the bond off early. And I'd like to know how much that compares to the interest we would have to pay if, if we didn't pay the bond off. Do you see what I mean? Is there some cost savings there?
I think all, you're right, and I should have said this in the beginning, there's some factors that you need to know, which is why we're here tonight, is to get your feedback on those. And there's, honestly, there's some of these numbers that we'd like to do a little bit additional vetting on, some of these came up quickly this afternoon even, when we're trying to say, okay, what are all of our options? And so tonight, really what we're looking for is a, yes, look into this, no, we're, we don't want you to look into this. Where should we spend our time as to possible options that you are interested in using revenue to pay for Mountain Ridge for?
So, but what I'm hearing is so far, look into all this that we've discussed so far, right?
Yeah, I mean, so, yes, let us know if you, if there's anything that's off the table, I guess is really what we need from you.
I think the 6800 West, you know, are we okay with there to say, hey, look at this? You have the town center exaction.
Yes.
Now, on this park impact, what you're saying, Scott, hey, let's find out what the payment, if we paid it off early, what type of cost savings could be there? Or if we take, if we're going to be paying the same, but we have five years to pay it in, the reason we have the park impact fee is it's supposed to go to parks. And so we're going.
We have a park.
Yeah, we have, we're, we're supposed to be building a park with that impact fee, and we have five more years of revenue coming in to help retire the bond. I'm just saying, and that's where I think we also have that park study that we've approved tonight, that might be able to help us understand some of that too.
True.
So, so are we okay having them look at that million dollars then?
Sure.
In the park impact.
But I want those information that we have.
Did you understand, Tyler, what we're, what we're asking?
Yes.
Okay. Now let's go down to the next one, is the fiscal.
Okay.
Fiscal.
The financial year 2022. I'm not going to use that word either.
So this is one-time revenue from last fiscal year that we are still working on closing out, and so we don't have a final number for you yet. End of September, was that our goal, Tyler?
I'd love that, more likely October.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I, there's too many dates in my mind, so.
Are we not going to give an estimate at all?
We're working on that.
Okay.
Continue.
We know there is some savings from last year, does that make sense? We didn't spend all the.
We don't know what it is yet.
Which, if you remember, Mayor and Council, you passed a resolution saying that when closeout is complete, staff will transfer that amount to a capital fund, and so parks capital could be that fund.
But let me explain why we don't know. So let's assume you start a project of like they're doing the roads in June, they might not be billing us until the end of July, maybe in the middle of August of what they finished in June, and so then we're trying to get the bills in to pay, and that also goes against, if you want to say, June's, our last year's billing, and we're waiting for everything to kind of come in.
We, we don't know all the revenue either, right? Sales tax.
Yeah, and what goes on with sales tax, and what the mayor's describing is both sides. So the audit looks very carefully, and we had to pull many hundreds of invoices for the auditors to validate that work that was done in fiscal year 22, although we may not have paid it until, like the mayor said, July or August, was booked in 22. And so those invoices are slowing down, but there were, there were some today that I signed that, that I directed our staff to put that back in 22. So that's something that's, we're trying to wrap up here very quickly.
Okay, then your next one is the financial year 2023.
So if you remember, Mayor and Council, we have excess, we are anticipating excess revenue this year that is one time. And so the total that's currently budgeted is 787,000. Again, if you wanted to be conservative, staff thought maybe 400,000 of that could go towards the park.
I think that's fine.
General fund, general fund, fund balance. So this is our quote-unquote savings account that is accrued over years. We are currently at 35%, which is our state, the maximum we can carry per state law. 100,000 is roughly 1%. So if you wanted to bring that down to 30%, that would mean half a million dollars.
Can I make a couple of comments about that? So for years and years, when I've been on the council, the maximum that we could save was 25%, okay, until about two years ago. And I've never, I, I just don't remember where we've had the big discussion about why we've just jumped up to 35%. I mean, it's always good to have reserves, but it seems to me like when we have this park, that you could even just go back to the 25% reserves, which would generate a million dollars. Because it seems like invariably, and this may be a different year, but invariably, you know, in two years' time, we had 800,000 more of sales tax come in, and, and a lot of times the property taxes a little bit higher and a few things. It seems to me that we could actually go, even go down to 27, 28% and still have plenty of reserve and use it for the park, because it'd be good to finish this park sooner than later because of increased costs and inflation. So I don't know, I would, I would support going even down to 27, 28% because it seems like when we have that bigger reserve, we find ways to spend it anyway.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with you, Scott.
I agree.
So what you're stating, what I just heard, the couple of council, are you seeing 30%? Are you saying, hey, let's take it down to 28 so that?
I would take it down a little bit more and give you some more money for the park and do it now because of cost overruns we're going to have, I don't know.
Is other council in agreement to bring it down like to 28%?
I, I am, because.
Tim, will you use your microphone?
Oh, does your mic?
I agree, because it's a hedge on inflation. We know there's going to be inflation in the foreseeable, well, we don't know, but we suspect for the foreseeable future, it'll be above normal levels. I agree.
So Scott, what's the other council, you guys okay bringing it down to 28 as, for discussion to have it go to the park?
Yeah, I'm even good with 27.5.
Okay, I, I will go for that.
Yes. Okay, we have.
So that's another 250, that's 750,000. Yeah.
Okay, 27 and a half, okay, the next one.
These next ones have to do with donations and grants.
Well, no, you've got water conservation.
So that's because we are switching to zero escaping along the frontage, we will get a portion of that money back through our grant. And then we've talked about the private donations, again, they are on this table just because it's not money in the bank right now, but we have every intention to continue to engage with those donors to move forward. And so, yes, the Highland Foundation, you said 45,000 about?
It's a 45 right now, may go up to 50,000, because there's someone that's going to donate.
That's wonderful. As you know, we've been in discussions with, with Surf Soccer in regards to the soccer field and our resident in regards to the installation of the baseball field. And so those are in-kind donations. Well, they haven't, the, the baseball field one has been pledged to be in-kind, the soccer one, we are working out the agreement still per council's direction. The next would be, so the, these last few especially are ones that count, the staff just said these are all of the options. And so these ones, we'd really like your feedback on, Mayor and Council. As you know, for years, we have intended to build a parks maintenance building, and for a variety of reasons, it's been delayed. We currently have 900,000 set aside, and we are currently designing the building and hoping to go to bid soon to build the building next to the community center. It has not been awarded, and so that money is there.
I personally think, since we've been talking about this for nine years, that we should do the park maintenance building. And, you know, I think there needs to be maybe some tweaking in design in that, because I know the ours council is pretty upset about losing a lot of space in the community center, but I think we need the parks maintenance building. And, you know, if there's this discussion of bringing all this traffic from the east side of Alpine down through that road, you've got to remember what impact it'll have on all of our public works building too. So I think it's good to have the parks maintenance building away from there. That's just my personal opinion. And I think we need to go ahead and do the park maintenance building, because it, it doesn't get cheaper either. That's another one that keeps getting more expensive.
Well, and if you're going to finish a big park, it would be good to have a maintenance building to help them operate out of.
On the street from it, yes.
I agree with councilmember Smith, I don't want to put that one off any longer.
Me neither.
Okay.
Another option, so these next two, council have actually, a previous council, I will say, considered and rejected these options, but again, because we were throwing everything out there, I wanted to bring them back because this is a different council. So we could use, we get fourth quarter sent sales tax money from the county that has to, that go, that we've dedicated towards trails at about 125,000. So if you remember, we're, we're currently in the process of updating our trail maintenance plan, and then we were planning on going out to bid this winter to complete the maintenance in the spring. And so that money could be used, rather than other trails throughout the city, it could be used on the essentially, essentially the interior trails of this park. Another council did say, no, they wanted the money to go elsewhere, to, to the other trails, but I wanted to bring it to you since you are a new council.
Well, at 7:00, I mean, traditionally, we've always had a lot of feedback that our trails need maintenance. What you're saying is you'd take the money away where we were trying to have it go towards maintenance to have it then. Now, there is going to be a trail in the park, you know, it'd be building that trail for the park, I would assume. I understand we said it's for that, but it'd be earmarketing, we're not going to try to maintain, we're going to try to put in this new trail in the park, or would we rather keep it towards maintenance?
We'd rather keep it towards maintenance.
I would lean towards maintenance too, because we keep promising people, we've got priorities, we keep promising we're going to do it, and then we find other ways to spend the money. I think. Keep it for maintenance. Yeah.
Okay, the next one is proceeds from the sale of open space properties.
I think you should keep those in open space.
I'm hearing from two.
Yeah, I agree. Unless, do we want to charge everyone open space fees for this park?
I don't know, we should ask Warren. Wes.
Wes.
I think that needs to be kept in open space.
Yes.
Okay, the last possible item council came up, or sorry, excuse me, staff came up with is, you do, cities are allowed to borrow from their enterprise funds. We do have to pay it back with interest. Again, back in the mathian calculations, we think there's about a million dollars there between our enterprise funds, but they're not much more than that, and certain ones, we wouldn't want to take any money out of it. If you remember, we were headed towards not having enough money in those funds, which is why we had to increase the rates this past budget season.
So I, I guess, my opinion, I think we have to be careful with this because, although it makes good sense, I mean, we've told people repeatedly that we're not bonding for this park, we're not raising their taxes for this park and different things, but then if we raise the utility fees and then borrow them and put them in the park, that's kind of like doing, you know, a little bit of a bait and switch. I, I just, I'm a little uncomfortable with that, if we don't have to do it, I would think we shouldn't.
I agree.
I, yeah, I think, Scott, I think you're on, I think we've got to be careful doing anything with our enterprise, especially since we just went through and upped all those fees.
Right.
Here, just in the last couple of months, and we have to have this to build the project.
And we'll have to be very public.
We found a million dollars, we can.
Oh, we just found a million dollars, and oh, yeah, I think you have to be real careful.
So.
So back of the math, so if you, so I, so the last four essentially council is not interested in, the rest, potentially yes, but we'll, we'll do some additional vetting, especially in relation to the bond payments, the park bond payments, and paying off early.
And Tyler's going to find more sales tax revenue, I just know it in my.
I have, you talked about sales tax, there's actually one that's not on here. What's the understanding of the council here for the parks tax? Is it only to go replace old, for equipment, was it, is it to go towards new equipment? Can any of the parks tax go into this park at all? Does that make sense that there's?
Yeah, why couldn't it?
Well, that's, well, that's one of the things we talked about when we talked about the parks tax, is people did, were under the impression that it would go towards, some of it would go towards this park.
Right.
I think, how much was the revenue last year, Tyler, was it about 150,000?
For the parks tax? And it was just implemented, so the first dispersion that we received came through in June, that was about 15,000. July was approximately 9,000.
What do you mean, I thought it got implemented last year?
But it couldn't go into effect until April because it, they needed a quarter.
Oh, it was on the ballot in November, okay.
So are you saying it might average around 12,000?
Based on those two months?
Per month?
Uh huh, and that's consistent with, with what we had budgeted, I think it was 135.
Yeah, so you're right, so council passed a policy in relation to that, that it needs to be spent on capital, not on maintenance projects for the parks tax. It could go towards Mountain Ridge, or kind of staff's initial thought, and again, we were, it's on our project list to go talk to the parks committee about this, but staff's initial thought was, use it to replace old playgrounds, because that's our only source of revenue for that, and some of them are very old.
Right.
Are there any other sources of revenue that council, as they've looked across, is going, hey, here, have you looked at this, you know, source or anything that way?
And do I understand parks tax is still on the table or not on the table?
I think it should be on the table, personally.
Yeah, maybe some of it on the table.
All right, we will add that to the list. So roughly, I mean, roughly speaking, so all of this added up, you know, I can't do enough math there. We're still looking at about 5 million with the changes that council has requested us to make, the things to pull out, no, less than that, that's 2 million. I can't do enough math there. So here's what we're going to do, Mayor and Council moving forward. And then, so 3 and 1/2 million, but then maybe we add, let's see, 250,000. About 4 million. About four million dollars, if all of these sources that you mentioned tonight were used.
So we're about eight-point-six then, with the four-point-six plus this four million, so then what would we be short, are you thinking, just for fundraising purposes?
We would, we will have a much better number for you September sixth, when we get the bids back for the gap areas. And I'm hoping that at that point, I'll be able to have met with the donors to be sure that we are good there, as well as the in-kind donations for the baseball and the soccer fields, to have some definitive answers there, so we can finally have a number for the budget, what we have, and the gap that we need to fundraise for. Perfect.
So when we talk about in-kind, we have Chad Christopherson doing the baseball fields, we talked about surf soccer, doing something on the soccer fields. I understand with surf soccer, we have Brian Braithwaite here, is there any update you'd like to give on surf at all, Brian? And where we're at with surf? And then I, and I think all the bids are going to be back in by September sixth, we kind of really had a better idea.
Yep.
When we first started talking about surf being a part of this, the cost of the, the park was somewhere between three and a half and five million dollars. As you know, in this discussion, we're at least eight million in what is estimated, and again, those were estimations back then, and it's, it's because partly inflation, COVID, price of everything going up, materials as well as people and other skill sets. The calculations that surf was working with, the expectation of what the estimated costs have doubled. And so, their ability to double their cost and have the same benefit is, is something that no one on this council would do, you're not going to double your, your fees and get the exact same thing. And so, what we're talking about is, how do we, how do we get them to participate in this with something of value to us as a council, and still be able to meet what they need to do? And so, we're going through those proposals and talking about how we can bring a proposal back. And one of the things that is very clear from this council is, we're not going to do a long-term contract, so that's not on the table, so that's something that's not going to happen. It's not going to be something small, because it's, you know, this is a big park and it's very expensive, and so it's got to be something impactful if we're going to do it. And it doesn't have to be anything, I mean, we don't have to do this. But in my opinion, we've got lots of places we can use park money, and if we can get money coming in that's substantial for this park, it gives us revenue money for other areas that we can improve. Highland Glen can use a lot of stuff, Beacon Hills can use a lot of stuff, lots of parks have lots of needs. So, we're working through that, and we should have an idea of what that's going to look like in the next week or two. So we've got to come up with something. So, it'll be a proposal back to you to say, here's the problem, we can't double our costs and still only get it, because it was still a premium before for them to be able to do this, but they felt like it was worth it, and now it's out of ballpark. And then they said we could, we wouldn't be willing to do it unless we had at least twenty-five years, and I said, that's, that's just not even an option. So that's where we stepped back.
So when will we, when will we know something from surf of what, we've been trying to negotiate, and it seems like right now, we're, we're kind of trying to get the numbers in the last two months, it's kind of went quiet.
Yeah, most, so, well, that's because we told them that it would, the estimates were around a million dollars, and they said that it's, it's a non-issue. So I've stepped back in to say, so let's, let's look at some other options of what could happen. So, the concept would be, if we were to do this as a half a million dollars, what would we be willing to do for a half a million dollars if they were to donate that kind of impact to this, which is, you know, substantial? And so, that's the kind of discussion that we're having right now, because that's about what it was going to be originally, in their minds, was going to be somewhere around that, that would be the top of what it would have cost them, and it would have been in-kind.
So, what if they build one soccer field that they have a lot of control over, and the city builds the other one?
Everything's on the table.
Table. Because that would be an option that I think some on the council would be interested in, I don't know if that's true.
Is there any input from the council on that?
Yeah, my gut would be that one field to maintain probably wouldn't be as valuable to them.
No, they'd like two fields, but you've just told us they can't afford to build them.
Well, they would like three fields, but they can't with the costs, and so the question is, would we as a city be willing to take the same amount of money that we were going to take originally, but our costs have gone up, and we would cover more of those costs, but they would still contribute a certain dollar value? Instead of, instead of saying, we're going to finish this field, whatever the cost is, what if, what if the discussion is, we're going to give up to this much amount, we will give this much value to the city, to the park? And then we work through how that, how we determine what that value is.
Because I've, I've always been interested in the surf for maintenance as much as.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because I think they're maintaining it to a certain degree, which is hard to do for a city, when we've got all the things we have to maintain.
Right.
Yeah.
Any questions on the surf agreement you have for Mr. Braithwaite?
I guess, I, I know this isn't a holdup of you, Brian, but I think Andy will stress as well, time is of the essence, the quicker we can get a decision from them as to what they can offer, so council can evaluate that, it would be so good for us, just as we, so we really know what our gap area is, essentially, our gap cost, I should say.
I would say by September sixth, we need to kind of know some direction, because I think once we get all these bids back in, as we're looking at these numbers, as a council, I think we need to kind of firm this up and get things done, because like you said, it just keeps escalating around an issue.
And our contractors would love that as well, have a firm direction from us.
So the, the two things that I'm working on is, first of all, to get a, are they willing and interested in giving enough commitment? And the second piece is, in doing in-kind stuff, we have to coordinate it with the city, because it's hard to bring in a contractor to do just a little area for the two fields, and not do the whole thing. So we would want to have, if they can do in-kind for the whole area, and that that covers it, and then it's, so the value of the whole piece being done in-kind goes toward their piece, and we find monies to do other pieces, smaller pieces, that will make it much easier. And that's, that's the kind of thing. So what are those pieces they can do in-kind that would have a big impact and a benefit to the city, that we could pull off of our cost structure, our cash cost structure, and hand it to them and just have them come in and do it? So it's defining that, that's a key element, in my opinion, because if we just, if we have little pockets of projects, it's almost more expensive to have them come in and do little pockets than it is just do ourself, and that doesn't really benefit us, so that's what I'm trying to do, is, is make it where it's, it's good for us and it's good for them. Okay? Makes sense?
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm just going to throw an idea, and you'll probably all think it's crazy, but, Tyler. So, just this last week, Congress has passed the Inflation Reduction Act, ha ha, but, but in that, there's a lot of funding for going to green energy. And do you think any of that funding would come to cities? For example, would they like, maybe subsidize, like if we put solar panels on top of all the pavilions, or, and all these things? Do you anticipate there'll be any money coming from that to cities to try to move towards green energy? I mean, I, I know it's kind of off the top of my head, but.
Well, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the legislation.
Well, they just passed it, the president just signed it, I think, yesterday.
Oh, today.
Today.
You know, I think, and I've always thought, it's just like when we had ARPA, we didn't know exactly when they passed it.
Right.
I'd be, I think in six months to, I hate to say, I think it's going to be six months.
We might get some funding.
Yeah, then we might say, hey, this is a way that we can maybe get a grant, you know, we might better get something on, on a couple of things, you know, they might say for water conservation, we already had this, maybe we'll do something different that way. But we don't know, I mean, that's going to be the unknown, and we, but we can't really say, hey, we're going to get.
Right, that's something to think about.
Oh, I think it's something to watch.
Yeah, and study, and see if there's going to be anything available.
Ultimately, what we want to do is make sure we have the money in the bank, you know, to pay for what we go to bid and contract for, right? But if, if we end up getting additional funds through grants or through fundraising effort, that just means less monies that we have to allocate towards that, that we can then put elsewhere, right?
Any other questions on mountain ridge park as an item?
So, will you go to the next, or, yeah, next step? So, so mayor and council, what we're planning on doing, again, September sixth will be a follow-up to this meeting. What we plan on doing is bringing you change orders for your approval, based on the funding direction that you've given us tonight. And so those change orders will be for phase one, what we've talked about. Again, assuming that we have the funding based on the direction you've given us tonight, those will be on your agenda for approval. In addition, it'll be on your agenda for approval to approve budget amendments, to transfer all of those monies to the parks capital account, because right now they're spread out in a variety of counts, and we'd like them all in one account for better accounting. And then after that, hopefully we will have a final idea on costs, and we'll need your direction on the unfunded areas, kind of the phasing for that, and then we'll have hopefully our gap number for a fundraising goal there.
Any questions on that? Is everyone okay? So they're going to, what we went through is what we were okay with funding, they're going to now move that as a, we'll have that as a motion to move into the parks capital account.
Sounds good.
And with that, I think we'll, we'll jump backwards to item, whatever item the, the maintenance agreement was, item eight.
Okay, so item number eight, let's come back to item number eight, which is maintenance agreements for country French. There was discussion about zero scape, discussion about keeping, landscaping as green, and there was a discussion about continuing it. So there's three, three options we have there. We have the, the builder here with Mill Haven, Todd Train, would you like to have Todd come and present? He hasn't heard our discussion, would you like to chime in, or have Todd come up?
Let's have Todd come up, we want to grill him.
Got some grilling for you, Todd.
Todd, basically, we're just, I mean, we're fine with this maintenance agreements, we just had a little bit of a question on the park strip.
Okay.
I mean, it's already grass, but we're trying to do more zero scape right there, so that's kind of just what we were trying to figure out, is whether to require those residents to zero scape that park strip a little bit more, or what are your thoughts on that area?
Well, first of all, I apologize. I, I asked to be on the very end, because I was at my daughter's soccer game, but.
Oh, I hope you didn't leave early, did you leave early?
It was almost over.
Oh, no.
That's all right.
I'm sorry.
No, I apologize, and I would have changed and cleaned up a little bit too, if I had more time.
Were they winning though?
The one time, the one time we're early.
Well, let's keep going so we can be early.
Yeah, yeah, okay, in all hurry so you can get to that pizza. Okay, so, we are the builder for one of the homeowners, and then I, I have dealt with the other homeowner when I was here at Highland City, and I think that he has come into the city several times over the years to try to do something there. The issue here is, this is the one, you know, several locations, we've actually built roads over the drainage channel going down through there. And so, when we finished the home, both of the residents actually approached me and asked me if there was something that we could do, and, and said, we, we noticed that you did the Highland City project across the street, we cleaned up the detention basin across the street a few years ago, and so that's why I, I told both of the residents that I would help them with this. We, they had already landscaped the, the park strip, but right there at the top, there's probably a six, seven-foot strip across the top that is flat, that is much higher than the channel. I told them there's no way that we can go down off the hill, I've been telling that to people for years. And so, we put together a cost estimate, we told them we would just do it at, at our cost to help them with this, and that's kind of where we're at. I don't know if they would be interested in tearing everything out and redoing everything, I think it was a little bit of a stretch, just to get them to do what they currently want. If you've driven through there, it is an eyesore, I included a couple pictures, but we have eyesores all over the city. So, I am here, just, don't shoot the messenger, I'm just trying to help a couple residents out. If, if you decide to do it, great, we will help them, if not, we will leave it as is.
So, I, I think the issue was, we're in favor of the maintenance agreement, and the zero scape on the other side of sidewalk is great. I think where we got into discussion, and, and, because a resident brought this forth, is why if we're promoting zero scape, would we have the green strip in front and the zero scape in back, why not just zero scape all of it? But that would entail ripping out the thing that they already done.
Correct, it would, it would entail them tearing out, you know, improvements that they've already paid for and done. Yes, we're trying to save water, had they not done it, I probably would have told them the same thing.
Uh huh.
But to go back to them and say, you know, rip it out and redo it, I, I just don't think that they would look, look at that as a win-win for everyone.
Right.
So, we're, we're trying to create a situation where they will maintain it and take it off the city's hands, at least up top, so that it's not an eyesore for everyone, but, and, the gentleman on the corner there, David, and I cannot pronounce his last name, but he, he has agreed to sign that agreement and maintain it for the future, so.
So, thank you. Any, so Todd, one, one of the questions I might have is, so you, the application that you're, the home you're building, has the landscaping already been installed then in front?
Both of them had installed it prior to me being involved at all.
Okay, I thought it was in the building process, and they were going to do the landscaping.
Well, they haven't done the zero scape.
No, so that home is one-hundred percent complete, both homes are one-hundred percent complete, the landscaping is all done, I was not involved in it until the end, we, we lost our landscape manager at Mill Haven, and I have a horrible, horrible problem of not saying no to things, and so I stepped in and started helping our landscaping division, and that's when I went out there, and, and it was already done, and they just asked if there's anything that they could do behind the sidewalk, and so, so, I, I wish I would have caught it earlier, the gentleman on the corner had landscaped to the center of that a, a couple of years ago, so he's had that green for a few years.
How many, how many square feet do you think the park strip is?
So, we are, we are measured it as about six-hundred-and-sixty square feet.
That's landscaped now with the grass and irrigation?
No.
Isn't it three-hundred for the grass?
Three-hundred for the grass, six-sixty for mulch.
Correct, it's, it's about a hundred-and-ten feet across there, the, the park strip is about three feet wide, but the, the, the rock mulch is six-hundred-and-sixty feet.
Okay.
So we're, we're just going to try to do about a five-to-six-foot swath through there, and it gets a little wider on the edges, if you, if you see there.
Could you think they'd also maintain the city property across the way and scrape for weeds?
You know, I think, I think that by doing this, it might help the weeds on both sides a little bit, and keep, you know, the seeds down in the bottom of it and not blowing across the top, so.
So that's six-sixty square feet rock mulch, they're not putting a sprinkler or drip system in there?
No, no, we're just going to put down some fabric to keep the weeds from coming up through and, and putting down the rock mulch. So, we, and I apologize, I already had the rock delivered, ready to go, so, kind of had.
Oh, pressure.
Yeah, so I have it, I have it sitting there, but we can move it and do something different with it, but we have it there, ready to go if, if the council would be.
So how many other homes do you think would be fit in this, I mean, we have a drainage basin.
There's, there's only one other location down on Normandy on the other side, it kind of is the similar situation, this one might be a little bit different, because it's a little bit more flat up top, down on the other side of Normandy, I believe it drops off quicker, and so there's really not an opportunity to do this as much as we have it up here. So.
So council, it's either, I'm going to approve a maintenance agreement here, with it being zero scape or, or grass, or you feel like you still need to continue to be able to understand what we're doing maintenance.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Private motion by Scott, second by Brittany, is there any other further discussion, if not, can we go to vote?
I assume that it's subject to the stipulations in, the stipulations.
I was going to do a, a longer motion, but Brittany was eager.
Why don't you go ahead and do the longer motion, we'll see if Brittany will.
Pizza back there.
I just say, I remember the city council authorized staff to execute an open space maintenance agreement with David Urin, I think, subject to the fine stipulations, one, One, all improvements shall comply with the proposed maintenance plan dated August 9th, 2022, and the grass park strip be added to the maintenance plan.
I have a motion by Scott.
I'll second.
Second by Brittany. Be ready for vote. Let's go ahead and go with roll call. Scott?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
That passes four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Andy, did you give them the good news about our ditch today?
No, I didn't. Go ahead.
What ditch?
Go and share the capstone and the ditch efforts.
So the ditch that Andy and myself have been working on for many years.
This'll be the...
The Harmon Ditch is officially abandoned as of today.
So Lehigh Irrigation has agreed to abandon. Will they fill it in?
So what, what we will do from this point on, so Lehigh Irrigation stepped up and Mill Haven also, we have paid for the abandonment of that ditch.
So thank you for doing that. Thank you for taking care of it. We also recognize that there's the one last user we had to have you guys come in. Once again, what does that mean for the ditch? Will that be filled in there?
So, as far as Mill Haven is concerned, what, what I've told Andy that we will do is as we build along the ditch that is close to us, if the city is okay with it, once we're ready to put up a fence, we will actually fill in the ditch and put up a fence on the property line.
That's great. So, and did you realize that the council finally put together an encroachment agreement for all the properties and reinforcing it? So, because you've discussed that many years.
Yeah, it's been in the works, hasn't it? Things are moving forward.
But as, I appreciate you taking time away from your daughter's soccer, but how are you seeing with the market? You're over there with the hollows. What are you guys kind of seeing, you know, with, with your type of product? I mean, you, you might be a real high-end home, but what do you see?
So, so the interest rate doesn't really affect us as much as it would like a production builder, but what I'm seeing is, I, I think you'll get better prices with the park. I, I think that...
I was hoping.
I think that we will start to see prices coming down and, and coming back a little to normal. It's crazy, crazy, the bids that we're getting on, at least my side, the development side. So I'm doing several developments throughout Utah County, and it's, I, I'm, I'm hopeful that here in the next six months, we will see a drastic reduction in what prices bids are, so I'm, I'm...
And Andy, that's, I've had some friends, you know, like I said, they were waiting to even move on a project, but they're starting, they said they'll, my, my builder friends have said they've told the, the contractors who are looking for work, if they'll go back to 2019 prices, they will move forward, and they're starting to get guys that are green, and maybe it's more labor just because they're trying to keep the jobs going.
And I think it's gonna take a little bit of time, but I think it will rebound, rebound backwards to what it, what it should be, because right now, prices are just so crazy. I mean, you're aware of that.
So you've sold all the lots and the hollows, correct, or all the lots?
We still, we still own five or six, the last time I looked.
And so how many homes do you have under construction? How many do you forecast this next year?
So we have, there's probably six or seven under construction right now. We've sold, there's, there are two homes under construction in there that are not Mill Haven, but I think there's only a couple of those that will go in. But we're moving, we have clients that are wanting to move forward, so we're just on the forecast. I, I'm assuming eight to 10 in the next six months? Or, so...
Thank you.
Okay?
Okay.
Thanks again, and I apologize for being late.
Okay, we're now gonna move on to item number 10B, which is Mount Ridge Donor Monument. Aaron?
You know what? And Andy graciously agreed to take this one for me, so I'll turn it over to him.
Okay, Mayor and Council, as part of the park planning, as the council's aware, we've been discussing options for the donor recognition areas, as well as kind of the entry monument signs. So what you're looking at there is just kind of our overall rendering of the park area, where we're looking at for the entry monuments, and we'll see them on the black and white slides, but it's just the area just north of the main pavilion, or kind of right at that main entry. So our option number one for the entry monument, and this one incorporates the donor recognition area into the entry monument, so either side of that, if, if you were looking at this rendering, you would be seeing the main pavilion right behind that gap or opening where the person is rendered there. These would be kind of a, several rocks stacked and fastened on top of each other to create the look of larger rocks. And then as you walk through them, you would see the donors would be inscribed on the cut faces or the vertical faces that you pass through, and so the donors would be recognized as you walk through, and those would be scrub, you know, carved or, you know, sunk into the end of the rocks there, so they were permanent. So, and that would be, those two entry monuments would be the little green squares that you're seeing on the screen, right there, like I said, right just north of the main pavilion. The next option that we're entertaining, in a similar fashion, this would be the same location, you would walk through a lower entry monument, and then the donor recognition would be complimentary to that, would be kind of a lower freestanding donor area, and we're gonna look at a map in just a minute for where that might go. And in either option, you could choose to do some things where you put plaques of different kinds on different elements that were donated. So a couple of these are showing, and, you know, I'm sure it's not a plaque for just the rock, it's probably an area of the park that was, you know, funded by a given donor, you know, so the rock is denoting that, or a given bench from a donor, you can see, a donor, you can see on the, on the bench back, there's a little placard, if you will. But possible location, oh, sorry, I need to go back. On the left, upper left, you see the main donor recognition wall, and there would be placards fastened to this wall face with the names of those that just donated cash but didn't donate, say, a particular bench, bench or a particular facility. It would just be kind of the, the name plaques on that. And so, that donor recognition wall, those green strips, if you will, are intended to just show possible areas where that could be located. So again, it would kind of complement that entry area, but wouldn't necessarily be right on the back of the entry area, but be kind of supplementary to it in, in one of these three locations. So, oops, sorry. So those are the kind of two options. Again, I'll run back through them.
Wait, Andy, so that design option number one, how tall are those?
Those are 10-foot tall.
Okay, so I'm just thinking scalability of kids. If it's 10 feet, that's gonna be a little bit harder to climb because it's gonna be slicker.
Yeah, and I, I think they'd be fairly vertical on the back, although I know you've got some fairly athletic kids that might be able to scale them, but, you know, they'd be a little tougher to climb. So, yeah, I was just gonna run through them again real quick, just essentially...
Do you think costs are the same for option number one?
So, the architect's estimating that this option, option one, is about $50,000.
How speeded?
But that's, that's kind of a, a, you know, because they're a little bit larger, right? And then I'm gonna go to the other option, just so we can look at it. This entry monument, he's estimating is probably about $30,000, but then the donor wall to go with it is probably another 30. So they're comparable in cost. This design, design option number two, he's estimating is just a little bit more because you've got three facilities instead of two, but, you know, for, for, you know, using a broad brush, you know, they're, they're roughly equal.
So here, here's just a thought. This is, so we only got three donors. Are we gonna spend $50,000 on those three donors? Or, does that make sense?
But I anticipate once we get everything out, we'll have a little smaller one. I mean, you'll have people donating, you know, 1,000 or two or 500, but I think they need recognition.
Well, I agree. And I think it depends if they donate for a bench, they're named to be on the bench. And I think we kind of hit together, like, if you donate this much, you know, you could have, you're being certain, on a certain size of the donors' walls, so...
Sorry, you can have your flag under your hand.
Yeah.
That is pretty wearable, isn't it?
That's right.
And so you could probably be offering a question, maybe on...
Well, what I'm understanding is that it's just depending on the dollar amount, you'd have, they'd have it on the, either they donate, and then they'd also be on, on the overall. And then the more you donate, the bigger your name.
And you might have some corporations donating.
Absolutely, yeah.
I mean, I've been out to Bank World and some of the other banks. I think since we let Bank of America have a billion there.
They're just, yes, I don't want to ask.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, is there anything feedback between option one or option two, like, what you recommend?
I wanna look through it real quick and then you go to the one.
Option one by far.
Option one.
Option one.
Okay. Everybody likes option one.
Option one it is.
Okay, okay.
Okay. We'll now move on to...
PI meter.
PI meter update. That is you, Andy.
That is me. So we want to talk to Council, just bringing up the speed. I know that we've had some communication amongst the various people and emails, but we were successful 10 days ago in receiving the grant from the state of Utah, to now couple with our Water Smart grant that we received, and so we received $7 million in funding. Our total cost estimate right now is $9.8 million, so the last $2.8 million is from our user rates. That was in our rate study. We'd actually planned on a little bit more than that because we knew that we would get this much grant funding, and so, but we also don't have final project costs yet. So our user rate study had actually planned on that we would spend a little, just brought around $5 million on the user, user rates. So right now, we are communicating with the federal team, or person that's been assigned as a kind of our grant coordinator, answering her questions, et cetera. She's working towards getting us an approved grant, I guess you'd say, because we don't have the grant until it's approved, but an approved grant, hopefully in September. And relative to the state of Utah, what we're supposed to be on your September 6th meeting is a, an update to our water conservation plan. We have to formally adopt our water conservation plan, this update, and, and then we can get the paperwork done for the state of Utah. We had them, as part of our grant process, approve our draft, kind of tentatively approve our draft, if you will. So you'll see that there, and then they anticipate that funds would be available, they're telling us September, I'm sure that's later September, by the time we approve it, and then, you know, works through the process. So we're hoping to have these grant funds available to us, we'll just say October, you know, the things always take, seem to take a little bit longer. We had hoped to put in 300 meters this fall, and we, we pre-ordered some materials, but we have yet to receive the meters, and so given the time of year that we're at, it seems unlikely that we're gonna get those in the ground. And so we're probably looking at starting next year. And one thing we are going to bring to you, in, it might be in your September 6th meeting, it might be in the September 20th meeting, is a request to put in a large order for the parts, and there's a reason for that. Number one, they're telling us that we're about a year out on receiving our meters, and so if we put in our order now, optimistically, we're starting mid next summer. We will say that we get enough to get going, you know, by mid, early, early to midsummer next year. And the second reason is, with our federal grant, they've given us six months in which we can order materials and not have to comply with the Buy American Act. And not that we are opposed to buying Buy American, but it does represent some additional hoops and things that we have to jump through, and so we'd like to get in and just order all of the meters and all of the boxes and everything that the city's gonna, going to provide to contractor, and get those coming while we don't have to comply with the Buy American, just save us some red tape, if you will. So what we want to do is make sure that, I guess you'd say, our, our confidence level is extremely high, that we're gonna finish these grant processes by the time we put in our, put in our order. All indications are that about the same time we're putting in this order, we'll have final approval on these grants from both entities, and that'll all coincide. But at one of your September meetings, you will have before you a request from us to, and we're anticipating that order will be around $3 million, is what that part's order would represent.
Thanks for all the work you've done on getting these grants. I think that's pretty amazing.
No, I, I think we ought to, you know, really seriously thank Andy and the staff. This is a, when you talk about a huge lift, we just got $7 million that our residents are gonna benefit from, so thank you, Andy, and we need to tell the staff thank you for doing that. I think it's been awesome.
And when it becomes official, we needed to get it out of the city newsletter.
I actually have, I'll be very open, I have it. I've gotten with Andy. My article will be about that and also the police department.
Okay, great.
So when do you think timeline, everyone will be metered?
End of '25. That's what we're looking at. We're looking at probably about 1,000 meters next year, just because we don't know exactly when we can get started. Probably in the 2,000, 2,300 range the next year, and then we'll finish it off with another 1,000 the following year, is what we're looking at.
And you're thinking that we'll have a contractor put most of that in?
Yes.
How soon do you think? And I know we, you know, it depends on timing, but we talked about maybe having the council have them.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're supposed to be working on all of yours, and I'll give them a little prompt. I know that Councilmember Bill's got hers, and they're, they are working on the others. And I will, I will give them a little reminder in the morning.
And I won't need a meter.
Yeah, I know you...
Because we have our own irrigation system.
Thank, thank you very much, and thank you for all the hard work there.
Absolutely. We're excited about it. We're excited that we're able to get those grants, and good things are happening there.
Okay, we'll now move to item number 10D, which is the upgrade option for sewer lift station at Caddy Lane.
And now the bad news.
Um, well, it's not bad news, it's just news. So many of you know, might know, we call the, the lift station at, at Caddy Lane, the Greens Lift Station, because the subdivision is the Greens at the Highlands. But that lift station is the latest one to give us, you know, problems this summer. It's been kind of a problem child this summer. We, because it was giving us some problems, we visited with a pump supplier that we work with a lot, and it was Rhino Pumps, and they have a new system that, that they are looking for a place to demo, essentially, and they want to have a place to bring people and sell them on it. It's a, it's a different system in that most of our lift stations, what happens is all of the sewage flows down to what we call a wet well, which is just basically a holding tank, and then when the tank fills up to a certain point, we pump it out and pump it up the hill to where it'll flow down. This is a system that just continuously pumps, it just adjusts how quickly it pumps. And when I say continuous, it does take little breaks in between if there's not enough sewer in the middle of the night, but it, it doesn't have a holding tank, and, and a lot of our problems at the Greens Lift Station comes because, it's, it's interesting, you would think our problems would come when we have too much flow, and that is true, but also comes when we have too little flow. And when we have too little flow, then the pumps tend to lose prime or the ability to pump, and they also, a lot of the solids and other things that get in the lines tend to kind of sink to the bottom and causes problems, and so...
Any trouble with golf balls?
I don't know. That's a good question, but I don't know on that one. So Rhino brought to us this system and said, and we had them do an estimate, and they said, "Okay, we would normally charge you $125,000 if you guys will be our, our test case, if you will, for the state. We want to sell these." We'll, you know, originally they had us up around 106, and we got them down to 97. And then they will give us an extra-year warranty, so a warranty for two years. And, and then the good thing about it is we are able to save our old pumps, and if we had to, we could go back to them, although I don't anticipate we would want to, but we're able to kind of save that for time and, and see if, if this pans out. In our rate study, we have some lift station maintenance in this year. VFD is variable frequency drive, so it's some of our pumps. We have about 70,000 in there, so we're a little bit short on, on what we're anticipating this year, but we looked through our, our budget options and said, you know, that might be a, a way that we could pay for this. It's something we're interested in doing, and versus any type of... And versus any type of rebuild of those pumps, it's actually quite economical, you know, if we have to come in and rebuild them, so. We're, we're fairly interested on the public work side of, of giving this a try, and, and if this works well for us there, it may be offer us a solution for some of our other smaller lift stations. So wanted to bring it to you, get your thoughts, and, you know, and if you are open to the idea, we'd probably bring it back for a contract consideration on the sixth.
Any input, would you consider?
I, I would, I think it's great, if you feel comfortable with it.
Uh, we've, we've looked at it quite a bit, and, and it's, yeah, I think it offers us a lot of, a lot of promise to our, our problems that we have there.
One question, and I know I've asked this before, Andy, is when you say guinea pigs or things, let's assume this does not work, there's a two-year warranty. Are they, I mean, you know, sometimes your prototypes have, they're, they're making a lot of modifications and changes to it. Are we going to be, in a sense, up that we wish we had the third model versus the first model?
It's a good question, they have a bunch of them on the east coast, so it's not that they're completely unproven, it's just they're not out west. And they haven't been in Utah, so I do have them in, in place, in function, working in other parts of the country, primarily the east coast, and so I don't think that we're exactly guinea pig number one, but in Utah, we would be, we'd be the one that they, they'd want to bring their other clients to and say, hey, come see this, Highland likes it, you know, and.
Is this a new, brand-new company starting up, or is this a company that has other pumps too?
Uh, they have other pumps too, so Rhino, who's the one that we contract a lot of our pump work to, recently became their rep for this system, and so Rhino, you know, we, we talked with Rhino, Rhino, you know, they, what options do you have? And Rhino brought us this option, it's kind of a, hey, what do you think, you know, what if we gave you a deal on this and you guys show everybody how good it works?
So what, you know, Scott's mentioned he'd be okay, any other feedback from the other council about having it come back on September sixth?
What is the advantage from a technology standpoint, and what is the energy consumption as compared to the other types of pumps we've used?
Uh, I'll get you a better answer for, for the sixth, but my understanding thus far is that it's, you know, fairly comparable, because these run, even though they run more often, they're pumping less at a time, and so energy-wise, it's fairly, fairly comparable. And, and repeat your first question.
Just the technological advantage of this.
Technological advantage of this is because it does continuously pump, it just adjusts how, how much it's pumping at a time. There's two advantages, number one, this has kind of a built-in grinder, so it kind of grinds up everything if it gets stuck. And, and number two, because it continuously pumps, it doesn't give it that opportunity to lose prime on the pump or to settle out the solids.
So if something loses prime, that means someone has to go in and manually.
Somebody has to go in and manually pry it, you know, essentially, and we get called out on the trouble calls.
And then have we contacted any of the municipalities back east that are utilizing this technology to see if it's what they say it is?
We will before the sixth, we, you know, we've talked to them, and, and we wanted to kind of get an early feel from the council before we told Rhino, okay, step up, you know, we're getting serious about this, step up and let's talk to some more people there.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
So Tim, are you okay having him, if he has those information, get some references back, are you okay if they bring it back for September sixth?
Absolutely, just want those references, what about you, Kim and Britten?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number E, which is council member report for council member Scott Smith on the North Utah County Animal Shelter.
So I'll make this real quick, I had to kind of smile because the police chief just left, and this affects the Lone Peak Safety District quite a bit, but anyhow, I'm, I've been on the animal shelter board the last four years, and this is the fifth year, actually I was on it two years when I was on the council before. So we meet in the Pleasant Grove Police Station, very nice conference room, and there's representatives from all the cities. Most of the representatives are actually the animal control officers for that city, which I oftentimes sit around looking around and see how many people are caring. But it, it's been kind of a controversial area because for years of the animal shelter, and our manager is a really great manager, I think his name's Tug Getling, but there's been a lot of contention because over the years, and when they have pets that are, or animals that are sick, or you just can't adopt them because they're very violent, or one thing or the other, they've used euthanasia by carbon dioxide in a chamber, and that's really upset a lot of the humanitarian, or not humanitarian, but animal rights people throughout the country. And they tend to be very organized, so about a year ago, after some pressure, there was a lot of research done, and, and the shifting the center, or the shelter to euthanasia by injection, which a lot of veterinarians do. The problem with that has been, we voted to do it a year ago, it's been slow to implement because there was trouble getting the medications, they had to train all the staff, there was a dog, I think his name was named Snowflake about three months ago, that was euthanaged, euthanized, I'm not saying the word right, and it really upset the animal rights people because they felt like, one, he should have never been euthanized, and two, that we still weren't doing the injections. And so everything's set up, so they're going to be doing the injections, there is some risk to the staff when you do the injections. I, I personally think that euthanasia by the carbon monoxide is a very humane matter, but they disagree. But anyhow, we're set up to do that, this particular dog was kind of in the news media, and we had all the TV cameras and things there, and the reason that dog was euthanized is because he bit seven different people that tried to adopt him. So sometimes that's hard to explain, but I think the shelter is very well-run. So unfortunately, because we've been a focal point from around the nation and different things on some of these issues, there's been a lot of kind of pressure put on the staff, unkind emails, unkind phone calls, and because of that, they were having a hard time keeping the staff, so we had to agree about three months ago to raise salaries, kind of similar to what happened with the police department. And so I just got the statement, and it goes to Lone Peak Safety District, which is Alpine and, and Highland, but I think Alpine pays, what, thirty-five percent? We pay sixty-five percent, but the bill this year is like, for the city portion is twenty-nine thousand dollars. But I think they do a good job down there, and, and I think we're going to meet all the criteria now to make everybody happy, and they do take really good care. One just interesting thing is, and I'm done, is for some reason, there are a lot of rabbits brought in from Lehigh.
Apples?
Rabbits, yes.
They don't have a Highland Glen to let them off at?
That's true.
That's ducks.
No, rabbits, rabbits at Highland Glen.
There's lots of rabbits that come in, but they take a lot of different things, and they'll like actually take raccoons if you take them down there, because they dispose of the raccoons, because they're not protected, but all kinds of interesting animals, turtles, dogs, cats, ferrets, rabbits, all kinds are brought in. So, okay, I'm done.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number ten F, which is fiber internet for Highland City. This is just a discussion item only, I thought I'd kind of give you, we've, we've been spending the last six months, whatever, trying to interact with different internet companies and see if we can kind of get them to come into Highland. Here's what we've, I've kind of taken up the research, so cities, let's kind of go through what cities doing. There's always the question, should the internet stay, should it be city-provided or should it be private? And, and what role should the city play? So I thought I'd go through and watch cities in the nearby area, what they've kind of decided. So Draper will be privately led, but they have Google Fiber going, that has agreed to go into their city. Lehigh is going to be city-led, and they're going with Strata, you've probably been seeing, if you notice, that they're going out for a big push to try to get sign up. American Fork City for many years has been going after, now this is only dealing with fiber. And they appear that they're going to go city-wide, I think they're, they're really looking strong at Strata, but they will probably, what it means when they say city, it means the city will operate the fiber, they'll do the charging, it will be on the building and everything that way. Cedar Hills is going with Utopia, Placid Groves went with Utopia, Linden has went with Utopia. Spanish Fork is going city, where they're going to be doing it as a city, Salem's doing it as a city, Wynden Hills is going to Utopia. Mapleton is going as a city, Springville got Google, and Saratoga City has went with, as, as a city. Eagle Mountain has also a private individual that's went in called Direct Communication. So in Highland, now let's look at, you know, what we, those are what the cities are kind of doing, most of the cities around us are bringing fiber in. Alpine was, has been interested to try to look to see what Highland's doing, but really, if you look in the, and most cities now in Utah County, you know, we're kind of anomaly not to have a fiber option, if you want to say, either private or city-led. Our city, and we've had the presentation from Comcast, they are stating they're, they're, they have about ninety-eight percent of Highland covered with their service. They are not fiber-based, but I have Comcast, which probably a lot of us do, my service, it, it does range anywhere from my, I pay for six hundred download and about fifty up, and there's times I get six hundred, but probably my average is one fifty to two hundred, you know, and it varies. And so majority of Highland residents are on Comcast. There's also out there, some residents will do Utah broadband, that is where you can have a dish on your home. Utah broadband has run fiber to most of the schools in Highland, they also are starting to go to a fiber product. This is owned by a Highland resident, when he came and talked to the, talked to us as, as a city, they would be interested in having us hire them to go put it in to operate, and kind of either the city would operate it and pay them to do it, or, or have some type of partnership there, but their connection cost per house would be about four thousand dollars to go put it in. We also had a lot of discussions with Google Fiber, and after they, they probably went through two or three times, they finally came back, and in their email, it says, due to the geographic of our community, we would not be profitable for Google, Google Fiber to come in at this time. Yo, Google Fire, Fiber does a cut in the road, they're a little less expensive, but Google is not interested in coming into the Highland area. Some new information that's come about is Verizon and T-Mobile have a little card that you can put in your, if it be a station in your house. Those who have that are stating they're getting about three hundred download and about fifty upload, but that's, you have to understand, everything that is internet like this, Verizon or T-Mobile, that is really based off of a fiber connection on their cell towers. So their cell towers have fiber.
Can, can I mention something about this, because my neighbor just told me this week that he cut off his Comcast, put in this box, and he's, he's getting it from their cell tower, the five G, and he says his speeds are much better than they were with Comcast. And he has a box, and he says, I pay fifty dollars a month.
So that is what we're starting to see some residents, and they are getting, those who have talked to.
So I could do it, because I'm just crossing the street.
You could, if you, now do you have Comcast now yet? Now they're supposed to, but you could go to this Verizon card, and we're hearing that if you have good internet coverage in your area, that this five G, the Verizon or T-Mobile card is providing decent service.
He's been really happy.
Uh, most of the cities are doing it privately, they're using the Strata or CentraCom, and what we're seeing about the cost is about four thousand dollars, if the city went, it costs about four thousand dollars per household to go run the fiber to it. There's also a new service called Starlink, which is satellite-based, they're about a hundred dollars a month, that's the Elon Musk, where they put all the satellites in, they are, you know, some are stating, when it very first came out, they said they'd give you a hundred download, and you'll kind of guarantee a hundred download to twenty-five up, some are stating they're getting all the way up to two fifty to five hundred download, but it is spotty, and that's Starlink out there. Then the next one, and we've had, I believe this council, most of you are on the council, we had Utopia come and do a presentation here at the city in two thousand twenty about them coming, and they would do an internet throughout all of Highland, but they would require a take rate. And really what the city's doing is we're backing a bond that Utopia goes and pulls, so it's not the city pulls it, but Utopia takes, you know, pulls the bond, and we have to guarantee that they would have so many residents sign up as what they would classify as a take rate. The cost, based on what we would guarantee as a take rate, would be anywhere from thirty to thirty-five for the Utopia side, and then have what's called an open access side, which is another thirty to sixty, depending on the user. Their cost, when they're talking, is probably fifteen to eighteen hundred dollars per house to hook up, but once again, we'd have to back a bond. Everything that's going into Ridgeview at this time, Utopia has agreed, has went in and put fiber lines all through Ridgeview. When I met with them, I says, since you've already ran that, would you take, could we count Ridgeview as a take rate if we decide to go with you? And they said, yes, they would count Ridgeview, even though they've ran all the fiber there towards the city's take rate. Now, the reason why I'm bringing all that up, I've got all the documents, they kind of, they did a little survey in two thousand twenty about what speeds they were seeing that Highland residents, they did a survey of the Highland residents in two thousand twenty, and this is what they came back with, is the average speed that we're seeing that most residents have currently is between a hundred and a hundred and fifty. They talk about what the current, why they, why individuals chose the current service provider, and it appears the majority was after fast or reliable service. Then you, you know, what options would you want to have offered, and what would you be willing to pay? And at this time, the average, what they said they'd pay is about seventy-eight dollars to get a gig download. Then we did, in our survey in two thousand twenty-two, we asked in our, what would they classify as residents should be our top three priorities? The number one priority at forty-nine percent was improve roads, the next highest was add internet options at thirty-two percent, and improve parks at thirty-one percent. Those were the three top priorities that our residents are saying they'd like us to focus on, now there's, you know, myriad of water conservation, economic development, addressing open space issues, but our top three were improve roads, add internet options, and improve the parks. Now, as we go through, we did also in the survey, internet satisfaction, which everyone has here, we have, it appears about thirty-nine percent are saying that they're this satisfied, are very dissatisfied in their internet options they have at this time, but we have forty-one, well, you're going to have actually fifty-six percent that says that they're satisfied with their internet options. Those who said they would support fiber, it depends on how satisfied they are, if they're very satisfied, they, about fifty-eight percent said they really don't see a reason for fiber, where forty-one percent, those who are satisfied, said, yeah, I like fiber. Those who are dissatisfied, eighty percent said they'd like fiber. And so as a council, the question now comes in, what would we like to do, do we want to stay status quo with, with where we're at, let the private sector come in? We don't, it does not appear we're going to have any fiber private sector coming in, if we're looking at fiber, it's probably not coming in from the private sector at this time. If we are interested in fiber, after we went through, probably the best option would be to have Utopia do a presentation, but I wanted to ask the council, do you want to have Utopia do a presentation, or do we want to, in a sense, not do anything and just kind of let the market play itself out and see how it serves us?
I'd, I'd like to have Utopia come again.
Okay, Scott, what about you, Britten, so Utopia, what about you, Kim and Tim?
Yeah, I'm fine with Utopia.
No, they're just going to come do a presentation, we're just talking about a presentation.
Absolutely, but I, so I know that we were talking about other cities that have done their own, is that something that would be financially feasible for us, or is that not something?
If you, if you believe the residents would support a bond, the only way I can see this would work is you have to go and pull a bond.
Yeah, is that how Mapleton did it?
Yeah, Mapleton pulled, I think it was an eight million dollar bond.
Okay.
Salem pulled a bond, I believe Spanish Forks pulled a bond, I think Lehigh is even, they, they, I'm not sure if they pulled a bond, they're doing something with Strata.
Yeah.
But they also have their own power company. American Fork is way ahead because they got in and they started putting fiber through a lot of their streets, and so they have it. When I met with, what's interesting, when you talk to Comcast, and I think when they did the presentation, our main roads have fiber. So if you go down, ten four hundred has fiber, six thousand west has fiber, fifty-six hundred has it, six, they all have fiber in it, it's getting it down the streets. And that's where it's not cost-effective for a lot of them, is to start boring to get down to all the houses. And so Utopia, now they're going to classify themselves pseudo-government, Utopia, we'll have them come do a presentation, appears that everyone would like to have a presentation. Be aware that they're going to, it'll be all about this take rate that we'd have to guarantee, and the way we guarantee. guarantee, and the way we guarantee it is through, they, they, they have us guarantee it through our sales tax. They, it's a sales tax guarantee. We don't pull the bond, so it's not on our books, but we guarantee their bond.
Um, so I know Mapleton pulled a bond, but from what I was talking with one of their city council members, that basically they're going to make money off of it.
Yes, that's what they believe.
That's what they hope.
And, and, and to be very open, it sounds like Spanish Forks, so when you get down there, Spanish Forks, Salem and Mapleton...
Yeah.
They have had, I think Spanish Forks actually gotten going and been somewhat successful, and a lot of people, so Salem appears to have hired the person from Spanish Fork, and I'm not sure what, who's Mapleton, but there's some specialists that they've had, that they've been able to hire as employees to kind of focus in on that, to help them out. But I, but once again, you still have to pull a pretty good-sized bond to be able to get the fiber in. So, anyway, so...
It's just kind of a personal thing, I've been restoring my grandparents' home in Pleasant Grove. Utopia put a cable in front of our property, I'm going to apply to hook up to them, and I'll, I'll have personal experience that I can tell you how it was working with them and hooking up and the costs and everything, because that's going to, because I am going to hook up to Utopia rather than Comcast.
So he'll be put...
So I'll be able to give you personal experience.
But i- if we do our own system, we, it's not a monopoly, so we would be competing head-to-head with Comcast.
Right.
And so...
And they're bigger than we are.
And then much bigger, unlimited resources, and then we need to determine what would we need in terms of a take rate in order to break even or to make a profit, and I, I think those calculations would be really valuable in making a determination on which direction we take. The other thing is, the reason I didn't like Utopia is because the technology changes so quickly, and we would be locked into whatever technology they use. They're, they're not obligated to upgrade the technology. So we're committed for how many years? Was it ten, twenty?
I think it's a twenty-five or thirty-year.
Twenty-five or thirty years, we're, what if some amazing new technology comes along and we're stuck with something that would be the equivalent of a Yugo or a Beta Mask?
I agree. The, the problem is, fiber's been out there for ten years, we as a community have not benefited from the fiber technology. I'm just saying, now, we're not, one thing we've not had, we've not had a lot of residents screaming, I mean, we hear every now and then, but, I mean, I guess the question is, how many people are we having come that they need to have the service?
But we rejected it before because of the technology and because of the guarantee on their take rate, and it's like, that's, that's not letting the, the private sector compete for our business, that's guaranteeing a little mini monopoly. I, that's, I think that's why we rejected it before, so I don't even know what the purpose would be of having them come in again.
Well, things change. Everyone heard to listen, listen to, we had to listen.
No, it doesn't hurt to listen, but...
We had to listen to Comcast, so we could listen.
I agree with you.
I, I would like to know, I would like to know the, the numbers on having our own system.
Yeah, me too, just, I mean, just talking to the Mapleton City Council member, I think they're charging thirty-five dollars, so they're able to basically charge a very minimal fee.
But they're probably like the Utopia, they're doing their line at thirty-five, and then they're doing open source where you come in. Rob, you deal some things with Mapleton, do you know any details on the Mapleton side?
My partner handled that. So we have a lot of details, I helped out tangentially with it, so I know, we did, they used the same person, it was Spanish Forks who started it, and they basically use the same kind of, you have to have a consultant who does the study to show that without using tax dollars, you can effectively provide the service at reasonable rates, and they managed to do it. I would, I would have to talk to him to figure out the details of how they carry it.
And I think there's, to me, the difference, I understand forecasting, I want to see the realization, like, who's really done it and how's it really functioning, you know, and I think that's where we've not seen a lot of cities. American Fork tried it, I think with AF Connect, and then I think then they backed out of and sold AF Connect. You know, so I mean, they got in early, that's why they have a lot of fiber, they backed out, but they're back after it again, you know, and so I don't know if it's a, if we're worried about, I don't think we have to always be what a me-too of every other city, but sometimes when people come in, you got to be competitive to what's going on in other cities.
But Provo put in their own system, and then they had Google Fiber come back in and put it, replace it all.
I tried to go after, so when I went after Google, I actually told them, hey, it appears, you know, well, they said no. I went and said, if we were willing to do a take rate or guarantee with you, would you be interested? Just to say, say, hey, let's compete against Utopia. You know, the next thing is, uh, Google cuts in the roads, and so it actually, there's some, some consideration of the road cut, and most of the times when you cut the road, you have to pay a road cut fee. So I even talked to Google saying, if we negotiate something that way, just to try to entice them to even maybe even come, so we, we didn't have to have, we'd have more competition, and, and some thought Google was going to be good. We couldn't get Google to, you know, they're, they're coming, Sandy's getting Google, I think South Jordan's getting Googles.
Provo's got it.
You know, South, and so Springville, Springville has Google, but we can't, they're just not interested because of our geographics and how, you know, how, how we're spread out block-wise.
Hmm, oh, because of the large lots.
Yeah, because we have a, you have to understand, some communities have just a fifty-eight, a sixty-foot frontage, we have a hundred and thirty-foot frontages, and so that, they have to run that whole.
So that's a problem. Well, we don't want to wait till we get all the roads resurfaced and then kind of into it, you know.
Yeah. Utopia does not do road cuts, they do boring, they're going to bring in a, a bore.
Bores would be better.
Anyway, is everyone still okay, we'll, we'll have Utopia come do a presentation?
Yeah, we can listen to them, you don't have to agree to them.
Is it, anything's changed that way? Okay, if there's nothing else, I think we are, need a motion to go to closed session.
So move. Did we go to a closed session?
We go to a closed, are you making the motion to go to closed session, discuss character, professional competency, or physical and mental health of an individual as provided by the Utah Code?
Yes.
Scott has a motion? Did you second? And, and Kim second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are now going into closed session.